Wonderful. So I'll ask if there are any additions to the agenda this morning.
Uh, no, your worship, there are not.
Thank you very much. Any from council? No. Is there a member of council that would like to, um, the, adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Sherif? All in favor? Bill, all in favor? Yep, that is Carrie. Um, are there any corrections or amendments to the June 29th, 2022 regular meeting of council minutes? Looked good to everybody. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the June 29th, 2022 regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor McGee, I almost said Deputy Mayor McGee, all in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. And we will move into our public hearing. Public hearing agenda for rezoning application 2022-09-D. This new, um, agenda always takes me a little bit to find, to find where we're at here. So today, uh, July 20th, 22 at 9:00 a.m. in the council chamber rooms, I declare the public hearing open at 9:06 a.m. For rezoning application 2022-09-D, those present today for the public hearing are myself, administration, council, members of the community, as well as everybody online. So the purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public regarding the proposed rezoning of 503-550th Avenue from residential acreage district to commercial general district, and 5020-5024 and 5028-50th Avenue are also zoned residential acreage district and are to be rezoned to residential multiple dwelling district. This zoning is not appropriate for this use and location. The appropriate zoning should be commercial general district, whose purpose is to provide for intensive commercial uses, offering a wide variety of goods and services with an attractive environment for pedestrians while accessible to motor vehicles. Additionally, it was also discovered that the fourplexes located at 5020, 5024, and 5028, 50th Avenue are also zoned residential acreage district and should be zoned residential multiple dwelling district. The current zoning of the subject properties was likely due to an error when amending a previous zoning map of the land use bylaw. Administration researched historical bylaw and zoning map amendments, and it was discovered that there is no record of any land use amendment application that was submitted to rezone the subject parcels. As such, administration has determined that the subject parcels were likely designated in error and currently remain so. The above bylaw received first reading at the June 15th, 2022 regular meeting of council and may receive second and third reading today, depending upon the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the application requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley bylaw 2018-07-A. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. Are there any comments now from administration?
I know, your worship, we have not received any written submissions.
Thank you very much. I will call for comments from the floor. There are no comments from the floor. I will call for any comments from anyone online. No, nothing. Thank you very much. And I will declare the public hearing closed at 9:08 a.m. And we will move into our delegations. Uh, 6.1 Drayton Valley RCMP stats, June 2022. Staff Sergeant Erin Matthews, good morning, welcome. How are you? I'm wonderful, thank you.
I keep forgetting, sorry.
Does it have a light on it?
It does now, yes.
Oh, it does.
I just don't look at it, so.
I know, we have one up here, so I don't know either.
Yeah, mine's down here. Anyways, uh, we did have a break and enter, went to a business in, uh, in town here, 88 Clothing. Um, that one is still under investigation. We do have some suspects. Uh, so we're still actively investigating that. Uh, they broke in through the back door and it seemed that they knew exactly what they were going for. So, um, we are still actively investigating that. There was also a break and enter to a shed in which some checks were stolen. Um, some individuals attempted to cash some checks. Um, and we do have, we arrested two individuals and charged them with that as well. The rest of them, majority of them were unfounded. It was, um, thoughts of people breaking into things, but they weren't, so. Uh, we also noticed an increase in the thefts under, uh, in those we had a mower that was stolen, one of those GPS mowers. Uh, it was located and returned to the owner. Uh, one of the hotels in town reported a theft of furniture, TV and a dresser. Uh, but that one was able to be charged to the person's credit card, so they didn't really get away with it. Uh, we also had an attempted theft of a catalytic converter, some shoplifting, and, uh, reports of thefts from cell phones that were left behind. Both of those were returned to the owners. And as you note, our mischiefs are up. Um, basically that is due to a change in our scoring, which I've explained previously. We're no longer just scoring them as suspicious persons or vehicles, uh, because if a person is actively trying to get into somebody's vehicle, well, they're trying to do that for a reason. So, uh, we've just changed our scoring on that. Uh, we did have some, uh, damaged vehicles, um, graffiti on a school. We have a suspect youth that was identified in that, and that's being dealt with through extrajudicial measures. Some loud parties and some individuals that locked themselves in some bathrooms that didn't want to leave. So, um, that is with, um, where we are with our stats right now. Uh, with regards to our staffing, uh, I'm happy to announce that finally we have a sergeant. So Corporal Hooper was promoted to sergeant in June, which was awesome. And, uh, but that also leaves, now we have a corporal position, which is now open, uh, and that will be posted shortly. Uh, haven't heard anything more on the other corporal position that has been posted. It should be closing right away here, so we should have some, some more information on that. Um, and on another note, uh, I have decided I'm moving on to my next chapter, uh, which is retirement. So, um, effective November 18th of this year, I will be retiring. Uh, so I, the Drayton Valley team is, uh, is awesome, as I keep saying, and I have no doubts that things will be just fine there. They are going to be posting the position here shortly, so that, uh, we can look at having a person in charge prior to, or probably just shortly after I retire. Uh, in the meantime, though, effective November 18th, Sergeant Hooper will be the acting staff sergeant. So, um, yeah, that's, that's about it right now, so.
Well, thank you very much for that. Uh, congratulations to both of you. Um, sultishly sad to hear that, but happy for you as well. Sometimes we're, we're happy for change, but we don't like to see it happen. We wish you the best in your, in your next, uh, your next journey and to enjoy it. Um, and yeah, if you can just kind of keep, keep us posted as
Oh, I will.
Things progress and things like that.
No.
How many RCMP do we currently have at the detachment?
We have, currently, we have, uh, 15, uh, well, we have 16 constables. One is moving. They were transferred to Airdrie, so they'll be moving at the end of next week. Uh, that will leave us with 15 in total. Well, 15 constables. Uh, we only have one actual corporal. Um, the other two positions, we have people in acting positions on those. So, um, we have the two corporal positions that are, well, we have three corporal positions that are empty out of the four. Uh, but we have people acting in those right now, and those are the, we have two of those that have been posted for, um, having to be filled that should be closing right away. Uh, and the GIS corporal position will be, uh, posted shortly.
Wonderful. Are there any questions this morning for Staff Sergeant Matthews? Counselor McGee?
Good morning.
Morning.
Erin, how long have you been with the force?
Uh, 23 years.
23?
Yep.
Um, and we now have an acting staff sergeant?
No, no.
No, not yet?
No, he's, he's, he's just the sergeant right now.
So the sergeant, just the sergeant?
Just.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm interested, how, how long have you been in Drayton Valley? Or I don't know if you can add, just?
I've been here for six years.
Yeah.
Um, upon retirement, I'm planning on staying here, so.
And Sergeant Kernberg has been in Drayton Valley for?
Sergeant Hooper's been here for five.
Five, okay.
Yep.
All right, good.
Yep.
That helps, that's very helpful. The last question is, um, citizens are suggesting that we have a lot more, uh, folks, um, that are, seem to be, uh, homeless than we used to have. Are, are you noticing that, or do you have an opinion on it?
I think we have about the same number. I haven't noticed any newcomers.
What's that number, Deep, would you say?
That is a difficult one to answer. Yes, it is.
Yeah, we'd really, really like to get our thumb on that number. We hear, you know, we hear, well, it used to be like 15, 20. Now we hear 40, 50, 80, 70, like, so it's,
Yeah.
Is it right?
Um, yeah, and it's, uh, I, we have a number of people that are still like couch surfing, right, which are so technically, they could be considered homeless because they are living, you know, from spot to spot type thing. We also have the, um, the camps. There's one out by the landfill. Uh, I don't know of any others at this point in time. I think that's pretty much the main one. Um, and with the pods open, we have a number of people that are utilizing those as well, so. Uh, but it'd be difficult to put an actual number to the number of, to the amount of homeless that we actually have. Sorry. I can look into that further and I will, uh,
That would be great, yeah, we'd love that. Thank you.
And the difficulty with that is, is that they, they'll look to the local politician and say, what's going on? And I, I notice it, and I, I need more information and, and shrug of the shoulders, I don't know.
No.
Can only go so far. And then you have to sort of say, okay, well, here is the actual.
Yeah, definitive number is difficult, like I said, because, you know, although we have, you know, we have a lot of them that are, you know, like I said, couch surfing that, uh, so technically they're homeless, but, you know, they, they're not living in a camp someplace, right? Uh, so that, you know, it, it, it does make it a little bit more difficult there, but I will look into it and I'll, uh, I'll see if I can't come up with some actual numbers.
Perfect, thank you very much. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Ballas.
Thank you. Well, I'm very disappointed to hear that you're going to enter into retirement because you have and are a valuable asset in our community.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm, I'm just wishing that if you continue to reside, that you stay involved.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's, uh, a lot of experience there and, uh, certainly is welcome. So wishing you the best, although it's in the future, but, uh, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
You still have time to change your mind. There's still a little window there. We'll see, we'll see what happens, right? Never say never.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much this morning and have a wonderful day. Enjoy the sunshine and hopefully it's, um, it's positive calls today, right?
Yes.
It's not a lot of chaos out there.
Hopefully. Thank you very much. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you. You too enjoy. Uh, moving on to 6.2 Drayton Valley Comprehensive Family Violence Institute. Uh, Mr. Stephen Dodds, good morning and welcome. You can, um, you are more than welcome to sit at the chair there or the mic, whatever you feel comfortable. Sometimes, yeah, it's easier to see everyone from there. You just have to make sure that the button is on so we can all hear you and everybody online can hear you.
Wonderful. Can you hear me? Good.
Yep.
Sound check. Okay. Well, I can see myself right there. That's interesting. Okay. Uh, thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present on behalf of my organization. So we are the Drayton Valley Comprehensive Family Violence Institute. We've been around for some 27 years, so we are 28th year, I believe, of service, uh, in the community, and we provide, uh, anger and anxiety management course, uh, twice a year for men and women in our community and surrounding area. Uh, so the course is free. There's no charge to anybody that wants to take it. And of course, all of you are welcome to take it if you so choose. Um, but the, the course itself focuses on, uh, developing people's skills in dealing with stressful situations, dealing with, uh, how they've expressed their anger and how they, uh, manage those immediate thoughts that happen whenever a situation comes up that might, you know, make us angry or upset. So, uh, on top of that, they also get, uh, counseling services provided, uh, free of charge as well, um, which is sort of a rare commodity these days. Uh, so that's sort of an opportunity that people can take advantage of as well. They have to take mandatory three sessions to be a part of the program. Uh, that's just something that we do to make sure the start, middle, and end, that people have, um, absorbed the knowledge, just so that I, sort of a knowledge check, but also there's a counseling component for that as well. So that's sort of some of the, the, uh, services that we provide there, as well as community stuff. If people are interested, schools and that sort of thing, we can, uh, chip in there as well. Uh, but we haven't done as much of that recently. We do have an adolescent program in the works, uh, and we're also looking at dramatically expanding our program to provide it across Alberta, across wherever, well, whoever wants to, uh, take part in this program. It's a built-in Drayton program, uh, by Rita Dillon, uh, who ran our program for probably 25 of the 28 years that we've been in existence. So she's, she was absolutely critical to the development of the curriculum and promoting the service within our community. Uh, and just, uh, a great person overall. And so they take this opportunity and thank her for, for her service to the, to our board as well. Um, so yeah, that's sort of been our, that's our program as it stands right now. Uh, we're looking to expand out and, um, bring this service to other communities as well, but for right now, we just serve the Drayton Valley area, so.
Well, thank you very much for that. Uh, maybe we'll open it up for a few questions for you. Any questions this morning? Counselor Clark?
Yes, thanks for that. Um, I guess, what are you guys looking to expand into that you aren't already? And then secondly, um, uh, do you guys have a huge user group within, within Drayton? And, and not looking for a specific number, but have you seen that go up over time here in the last couple of years?
Sure, sure. Um, so we're looking to expand, uh, as, as wide as we can. The program we have is very repeatable. It's very, um, it's, it would be, now I wouldn't say easy, but it would be very, uh, user-friendly for another community to pick it up and build up from there. And hopefully what we'd like to do is make sure that those other communities can actually fund what we're doing here, so that we can do ours with, whether funding is there or whether funding is not there. So that's sort of something that we've been looking at doing is to make sure that we're protecting our, our end well, building the program out. Um, and in terms of our user group, um, I'd say COVID was tough because of our restrictions and the size of room that we had, uh, was sort of limited. Uh, but other than that, we've had a very steady for about 27 years of having a waitlist for people to come onto the group. So usually end up around 20 of, 20 males, females, twice a year. So, and some are repeat customers, some want to take the course again and by all means they can. Um, so that's, that's something that's been pretty consistent, I would say.
Uh, you mentioned that you go into schools and I know, oh, sorry. Um, um, I know that there's an increase with anxiety, right?
Yeah.
So how are you kind of approaching the schools or do the schools reach out to you? Or how do you make sure that the students have access to that in their?
Uh, so, so far, we, we have an adolescent program that's in development. Uh, I've been talking, I've worked in the schools for eight years before I started this job just last year. I'm actually kind of a newbie at this, in this position, but, uh, yeah, I've been working in the schools for quite some time. Um, so I had a, a number of connections within the schools, so I've been talking to people about, you know, would this be a program that you guys would like to see in the schools? And, you know, there's been some, some uptake, some, it's been sort of, I haven't used exactly the, the same manual, but sort of adapted it to youth. I did that, some of that at the outreach school last year when I was still working there. Um, and so that's sort of been more of my focus has been doing that. Uh, just sort of using the stuff that I have there at the school and talking with them. A number of people, uh, on our board do want to push in that direction as well, so that's something that, that we'll be looking at going forward, uh, years. And I think it's, some of the stuff that we've heard from people is they'd love to have learned this when they're in school and they was like, man, I would have saved me so much trouble and, uh, wouldn't have showed up on Staff Sergeant Andrew's stats if I wasn't on this thing. So it's, it's one of those sort of situations. And we hope to, you know, continue getting a word out and just sort of spreading the good news about the stuff, because I think it's very important for people to be able to understand. So I even learn stuff every time I take the course and provide the course. So there's, there's lots of good stuff in there for people to, to cling on to. So, um, and I mean, on top of that, having free counseling these days, this day and age is quite, uh, quite an added bonus, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think you're right that it's so important, like, especially over the last few years, there's been such an increase in everybody and their coping skills and anxiety and things like that. And it should just be a given that when you go to school, that you're taught, you know, these tools, and it should just be part of the curriculum and it should be available to every single student, because a lot of times there's that shame, right, attached to it. And people think, well, I don't want to ask for help or I don't want to, you know, but we, we all need it, right? We all need to cope and we all need to let go of our stress and learn how to deal. So it's fantastic what you're doing. Uh, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Uh, good morning, Stephen. Yeah, I've seen, you know, I think you're using the rotary house there and sometimes it's, uh, like you said, you know, I've seen that it's, it's quite, uh, congested sometimes. Just wondering, um, you said that, you know, twice a year, um, is that because of the funding aspect of things?
Uh, not necessarily. We usually, we go in the fall and then in the spring. Found in the summer quite hard to get commitments out of people to stick with it. They're like, oh, yeah, I'd love to do it. And they're like, well, when's your availability? Like, well, I'm actually gone for July. And you're like, cool. So that won't work. Um, so usually it's, it's a little bit tougher to get stuff going in July. So usually through the summer, um, that's when I do a lot more, like, I'll do sort of like filler sessions to help people get through to either the September course, or if there's still some stuff that they haven't sorted out from the, from the fall or from the spring course, then we'll sort of just cover that stuff, just to make sure that the wheels are staying on the wagon, so to speak, and keep it rolling.
Right. Um, the other thing is that, you know, um, just to, not the specific course, but maybe a generic introduction to a course or something, would you be interested in, like, doing with the service club in town or clubs in town?
Uh, in terms of like, just providing them more information about it, or just giving them some of the, the tools and stuff that we use?
I would say a bit of both.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, that'd be, that'd be, I'd be totally fine with that. Yeah.
Okay, good. Perfect, thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Good morning, Stephen. Um, so what, what triggered you being here was a conversation that you and I had, and then I had with council, um, just ready to tell them that you'll never guess, we got a program in town. Nobody knows about it. And so I said, let's get Stephen here to talk about that, right? And so, uh, from my point of view, uh, is that maybe it's, uh, the, what you do, it does quietly, you know, percolate through the community and, and does its work and, and may not need the exposure, uh, that, that you're looking at. But, um, if you're thinking of expanding, it would make sense to, uh, to, to start talking, as Counselor Gomana talked, to some of the social clubs and saying, by the way, this is what we do. And, um, and so, uh, it, 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 do you see a, a role for council in your, in your work?
Uh, well, we have a fundraiser, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, but we have, um, we do have a fundraiser. It's a raffle, but unfortunately, we launched at the exact same time the Oilers playoff streak was going on, so we got absolutely fleeced by their 50/50. But, um, other than that, uh, I think, you know, if we have, we put out our, our group presentation, or our, I'm sorry, our group advertisements, you know, that sort of thing. If you guys are just aware of those, share those out, um, spreading the word as much as possible. We want to make sure that people aren't left behind or feeling like they can't come to this. This, it's a group of, for all, all sorts and all shapes. We don't ask why you're going to be there. You're not asked to share personal stories within the group. In fact, pretty much discouraged from doing that because it, it can lead you down a rabbit trail. We only have the, the time allotments that we have. Um, so usually what we try to get people to do is just kind of, we're not, you don't have to share why you're there with people. And I think a lot of people think if you're, you have to sit around in chairs like they see in the movies and talk about the reason that you're there. I am Steve and I'm, you know, this is why I'm here at this anger anxiety thing. Um, the other big piece of our thing, I probably should have mentioned this too, is, uh, it's a domestic violence prevention aspect to it as well, and that's heavily throughout the, the, um, throughout the curriculum as well. So it, that's sort of where we, we came from, and that's our origin. Uh, there is a lot of skills-based stuff about anger and anxiety, but we're always sort of focused back on, on our origins, which is domestic violence and family violence, which is where we get our, our name from as well. So, uh, yeah, that's been a big part of our, our mission to combat and, and stop domestic violence within the community. So, yeah.
So two follow-ups. Um, where do you get your funding from? And, and how do you, uh, get board members? How, how does that work?
Ah, board members, yes. Uh, so we, we have, uh, our funding comes mainly from the provincial government. Uh, we do have some FCSS funding as well, uh, that has been quite helpful this year to just sort of top us up from where we were to where we needed to be. There have been some changes in our program since I took over that we'd had, um, before we had a lady and she had, didn't have the counseling requirements that were needed to do the counseling. So she had, they'd shipped it out to somebody else. Um, and so then when I came back in, then it was a dip, they had to move some monies around to make that work. Um, so that had, had to be shifted out. So we, we got that all sorted out and figured out, but, so most of our money, I would say the bulk of it from the province, and then we have some from, from FCSS as well. Um, and then hopefully some from a fundraiser, our 50/50 that's available on our Facebook page for those looking around. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's sort of been our main sources. In terms of board members, uh, we have applications that people can pick up for that. Not sure if they have to come through the AGM or not. Not really a huge person on knowing all those rules, but I think that's probably true. Um, so that's something that I think we're always looking for. We've had, uh, we had Catherine Enns, who was our probation officer here in town for a long time. She's just retired, uh, and moved on. So she, we've lost her, and we had somebody else that, uh, just got really, really busy and had to step aside, so they weren't able to, to keep up with things. So we are looking for more board members. Um, and we're pretty cool, so feel like you want to join in. More than welcome to.
That's awesome.
So it, it, and it also occurs to me, uh, because we also do the advertising some for board members for, for local committees that we have in the, in the town. And, um, uh, it, it seems to me that, and we also have a, what we call that interagency. And so I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that you're connected somehow with our interagency groups, because generally you're dealing with similar clientele or similar issues and those kinds of things.
Yes, yes, I am involved with the, uh, interagency. Not as much as I probably should be, but I am, yeah, I've been, I'm on their emails and I'll try to attend a meeting if I can, if I can swing, swing.
Sure, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming and sharing. I think it's very exciting what you're doing. And thank you for providing the services, you and everybody for the community. It's, it's greatly needed, and I think that, like I said, everybody needs to be accessing, you know, opportunities like that. And anything that we can do to help spread the word, you know, let us know and we'll make sure that we're, you know, marketing when you do have these events and things like that. We can be putting it on our website and sharing and, and everything. And, um, you did mention that the 50/50- and, and everything. And, um, you did mention that the 50/50 is still going?
Still open for a few more days. So.
Okay.
I want to get your tickets because your odds are great right now.
And how, um, how would a person go online to do that? What is it?
Uh, so, yeah, through our Facebook account, we have, uh, it's called Moving Beyond Anger and Anxiety. Uh, we have the link there. It's, there's also a raffle box, uh, that's where it's through and it's, uh, the DVC FVI one there. So if you want to check that out. Um, and I also have some pamphlets here if you guys are interested for our, for our course. I just have some information if people want one. Um, I can hand those around as well. Oh, my checks. I give you those. Okay. Um, yeah. So that's, I just want to thank you guys all for the time today. I really appreciate it and, uh, look forward to hearing from you guys and seeing you in the future.
Wonderful. Anytime you want to come, you're more than welcome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Enjoy. Take care.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move into our decision items. Eight point one, second and third reading, uh, draft rezoning bylaw 2022-09D, 5020, 5024, 5028, and 5036, uh, at 50th Street. And I believe that is you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, it was brought to administration's attention that these four properties in the downtown area were districted in error under the agricultural acreage dis- or residential acreage district. Uh, the one property, 5036, uh, is presently a liquor store and the other three, 5020, 5024, and 5028, uh, have developed fourplexes on them. Uh, neither of these uses are permitted or discretionary, uh, in the, uh, acreage district and therefore these uses would be considered non-conforming, uh, which have restrictions on what they can do. Um, to correct this, uh, we're proposing to change the liquor store, uh, parcel to general commercial and the fourplexes would be rezoned to residential multi-dwelling district. Each use would then become a permitted, uh, use in each respective district. Uh, bylaw 2022-9D received first reading on June 15th, 2022. No comments were submitted at the public hearing this morning. Administration recommends that council give second reading, propose rezoning bylaw 2022-099 as presented, and following that, council gives third reading to the same bylaw. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Council McGee?
Um, so I missed that. Am I, I'm up?
Oh, yeah, you're up. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, um, we, we recognize this, recognize the error, making a correction. Um, I'm, I make the leap that we looked at all of the other parts of our map and said, this is what we're doing today. And, and we may come across them, but, but it'll be.
Yeah, we've, we've through the counselor, McGee, we, we have a strategy to, uh, um, review the rest of the map.
Council Gomana?
Well, that was my question. I just want to, I, I know there's a, another few that we need to look into, but, uh, I think, um, you, as you said, we have a strategy. So we'll wait for that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? So you're looking probably for two separate motions this morning, right?
Yes.
One for second reading and then one for third reading. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion, um, for second reading? Council Evans, thank you.
I'll make the motion that, uh, council gives second reading to the rezoning bylaw 2022-09D.
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None? Uh, there is a motion on the table to give second reading to propose rezoning bylaw 2022-09D as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a member of council that would like to give third reading? Council Gomana?
Do I need to, uh?
Think?
I don't need to have, get the, uh, approval for third reading, right? But I'll, uh, I'll, uh, make a motion that we give third reading to the proposed bylaw 2020-09D as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any question, comment, or debate on the motion? Those two motions are what we're looking for. Wonderful. Okay, I'll ask. All in favor? And that is carried. And we don't have to give final now, third and final, do we? That's it? Just?
That was third.
That was third and final. Okay. Maybe it's just wrote different. Everything is different on the agenda here. So I'm always like, uh.
Yes, I, I apologize. I forgot to separate them in the report.
That's okay. That's okay. No worries at all there. Okay, moving on to eight point two, uh, manufactured home architectural controls, draft bylaw 22008D, amendment to land use bylaw 202012D, uh, text amendments. This is you again, Mr. White.
Council asked administration to review the manufactured home development regulations in our land use bylaw to enhance the physical condition, habit, habitility, and visual appearance of some of the, the manufactured homes and the manufactured home parks and other areas in the town. Um, there were a few, uh, derelict, uh, home, manufactured homes that were giving, uh, the town and the park owners problems. So we're trying to put some regulations in the bylaw where we could, uh, uh, issue some enforcement, uh, actions if, if so needed. So these architectural controls, uh, basically articulate basic principles of design or result in, uh, development with a visual character and construction quality that, that would meet the expectations of council and other single-family dwellings in the community. Administration reached out to the, uh, the owners and the residents of the home parks and the, the units themselves to discuss this bylaw and the elements within it. And, uh, uh, prior to bringing it to council today for, for the formal process of a adoption. Um, so basically the, there are eight, uh, architectural controls where you're going to add to that section. Uh, the first would be massing and that just refers to the form and configuration that you normally see in a mobile home park. Uh, the form is single double wide. Uh, again, an expectation of what you'd see. Materials would be suitable for the purpose durable, compatible with other, uh, home parks and areas. Again, same thing with color, complementary color. Landscaping, uh, all of the yard areas would be landscaped to the develop, to the satisfaction of the development authority. Uh, there would be a similar scale of development, uh, width and height to manufactured homes. Age, uh, shall not be older than 25 years, uh, from the adoption date of this bylaw unless in the opinion of the development authority, uh, and a safety codes officer that would reveal that the home has been upgraded to meet life safety requirements such as smoke detectors and egress windows, energy standards such as double glazed windows and wall assemblies and fire resistant materials for flame spread rating and asbestos free. And the final eighth one is maintenance. So these, these homes would have to be maintained to the satisfaction of the development authority. Uh, there was, we sent out two letters to each owner. Uh, the majority of the comments that we received back, about 25 calls each time, uh, were regarding, um, the cost of, uh, maintaining these dwellings and, uh, uh, number seven, which was the age. So they had concerns about that. And so we originally had started at 10 years, moved to 15 years and, uh, kind of settled with, uh, 25 years with, uh, the park owners, uh, saying that, uh, basically a mobile home park, a 25-year-old mobile home park isn't that old. It's not like a car. It's, uh, has a little more, uh, quality of, of, of living in that. So it's, it's more how it's maintained and, and, and up kept. And they felt it was, it would, if they limited anymore, it would be, they would be losing a big proportion of their market that they could, uh, rent to. So that's what we agreed to, uh, with engagement process. Uh, so that's probably the most discussed, uh, issue. Uh, then following that, council also wished us to review, uh, the land use districts where manufactured homes could be allowed. Uh, so the following changes are proposed that we delete, uh, manufactured homes from the discretionary uses of the general residential district and the multiple dwelling district. Uh, and so they wouldn't be allowed in those districts anymore. And, um, also deleting the manufactured homes from the permitted uses in the small parcel district and the transition district. They still would be allowed as discretionary uses in those two districts. So reducing the opportunities where they can locate outside of, uh, parks or, or certain areas, uh, uh, kind of, uh, would also, uh, encourage normal residential development that I think the town wishes as well. So, uh, that's proposed. Um, administration would recommend that, uh, council give first reading, uh, to this bylaw 2022-8D this, this morning. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Also may have.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions this morning for Mr. White? Council McGee?
Johnny questions. I'm sorry about that, but I have two things on my mind. Um, one, uh, you're comfortable with the, um, the amount of information coming back from the park owners? That's, you're not really getting anything from the public with the park owners? And you're, you're comfortable with how that, uh?
Yeah, I, I through the council McGee, yeah, I met, uh, twice specifically with the park owners. And basically they, uh, had some comments that they wanted to be addressed. And so we addressed those. And, uh, I received about 25 phone calls or emails from each letter I sent out to owners. So I think that's a pretty good response. And most, you know, most people were, they understood what we were trying to do. We're just trying to bring the, the, uh, maintenance and the aesthetic standard up to, uh, the single-family areas that we have in town. And that's not a difficult concept for them to, you know, so they, they, they got that and they, the park owners and the residents wanted that for themselves as well.
And I, I note that we have a number of, um, courts, uh, outside of the boundaries of the town of Grayton Valley and the county of Brad. So did you work with the county at all?
No, I did not, uh, talk to the county.
And they have their own?
They have their own bylaw.
We don't, we don't know what they've got though.
I looked at it quickly. Uh, it didn't seem to be anything really. Um, they didn't have any architectural controls.
Thank you.
Council Gomana?
Thank you. So you, you mentioned that, you know, you, you, you had some communication with, uh, with the, uh, group, right? So, um, just wondering 25 years. Um, so we are going to grandfather in the, the existing?
Yeah, yes, uh, Council Gomana, that was the major question from the residents. They thought, oh, that my, my child is 25 years old. I have to move now. And no, and that's not our intent. It was, if they're there, they're grandfathered in. It would just be preventing anything new that was older than 25 years unless they met those other requirements from moving into a, a park area or into town.
So the other question is that, um, you know, a, a unit 25 years old, um, you know, we have the other criteria that, you know, windows and everything else that we talked about, right?
Yes.
Um, would 25-year or more old unit will match those criteria or they would have to like improve it?
Yes. Yes, we went back to the, uh, the building code of that, uh, I think it was the 2007 building code.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, so those, that's kind of the standards we're going for. And, um, like I say, each, each one will be a specific evaluation if they're older and to see what they have. But the major, the major things we want to prevent is asbestos and safe, address safety things like the older mobile homes don't have the appropriate size windows for egress in case of a fire and, uh, you know, the smoke alarms and detectors, that sort of things. So.
So again, this is just for the, if they are bringing in a new unit or anything. If, if it is old unit, are we still doing inspection or that's not?
If it's, yeah. No, if it's, uh, only if it's 25 years or older, we would inspect it. It would still have, have to have the, the other requirements that are in bylaw, which of course is a CSA stamp and, and meet the foundation requirement. All of that stuff would still be, still need to be made.
Yeah. So in that case, do we give a timeline for them to, you know, change what need to be changed or what, what's the process would look like?
Oh, they, oh, you, you mean the existing, um, no, they wouldn't have to change. The ones that are there are grandfathered as is. They don't, the only thing they would have to upgrade is, uh, maintenance.
Right.
Maintenance and, uh, aesthetics. So they, you want to have all the windows fixed in terms of broke, we're just looking at broken windows and the ones that are on, on site. Uh, only the new ones moving in, we're going, going to go through this, uh, review process.
Thank you.
Council Sheriff?
Um, you mentioned having manufactured, um, homes in designated parks only, but I know, um, I was trying to look at the address, but it's too small. Um, northwest of St. Anthony's in that area. I know there's a few manufactured homes on lots. Will they be asked to be removed? Or?
No. Through the council sheriff's, no, that area is also, it's, it's like a mobile home park, only it's, uh, red, some of the residents own their own parcels. So it's, it's not a park by that definition. Uh, they, that districting is the, uh, uh, the, I believe it's the small parcel, residential small parcel. So they would be allowed to remain. And they could, uh, actually add new, new, uh, new, new, uh, mobile homes or manufactured homes in that district, but it would be discretionary now.
Okay. Is there any other areas in town that you know that have?
There, uh, through the council sheriffs, there are the odd, uh, uh, ones dispersed throughout town, but, uh, I can tell you, uh, since, since I've been here, I've had some inquiries about locating new ones in the, in the areas. And the first thing I advise them is to talk to the neighbors and see how much of a, uh, you know, a, a concern they're going to have. And they generally decide to, to do something else. Uh, so there is quite a concern in the community and the normal, in the single-family districts, uh, about these manufactured homes moving in.
All right. Thank you. Council McGee?
I understood on 44th and 45th, it was, uh, previously in, when I lived there, um, was a trailer court, uh, in a sense, um, to your point. But I also understood that over time, the decision by the town was to say, if you are going to change the plan, you cannot put a mobile home on that. You have to go to stick build or something different. That's what I understood, but I, I heard you say different.
No, the, for that area is, um, it would be discretionary. So we would look at the case of what, uh, uh, we're trying to do there. If, if, if we do, uh, through the municipal development plan, if we do determine that that area should transition over, uh, to single family, we would, uh, then kind of identify that area and redistrict it as a transition zone. And then we'd have certain policies to address that. If, uh, we decided that, that that could remain virtually as is, we would have policies to address that as, as well. At the present time, that area just, uh, I believe it's just, uh, south of 50th Ave. And yeah, it's, it would remain as is. We're not proposing to change anything there other than, uh, their, uh, their visual maintenance and landscaping, uh, and siding standards that we would, uh, adhere to.
Deputy Mayor Ballas?
Thank you. Is site location and how they're to be structurally placed on the lot, is that addressed somewhere else?
The, uh, through the council ballast, the, the land, the existing land use bylaw also addresses, uh, the foundation and of course the setbacks that has to be placed. There's, there are lots that, uh, the park owners have. So they have to fit into these lots with the proper setbacks. So to answer your question, yes, there's.
And secondly, can? And secondly, can you tell me what text amendment bylaw means?
It's just a phrase that you, for a bylaw amendment, that it doesn't have an implication on the, the actual land use map. So, the bylaw text would cover the change. So, if this had, so, for example, the previous bylaw that we did, we were changing the map, and that would be a normal bylaw amendment. This is just, we're changing the text in the land use bylaw, not necessarily changing the map. So, it's just a, a planning jargon that's used.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Just going through the same line, just about the roads, you know, we sometimes get complaints that they have not been maintained sometimes, so is that going to be a part of these standards as well?
The roads inside parks? Well, my understanding is they are maintained by the park owners, not, not the town. Oh, you mean standards? No, we didn't look at that aspect of requiring them to maintain to the same standards as the town, no, we could, we could look at that.
So, any amendments to this? Would there, would they be suggested today? Are we giving first reading, and then there would be an opportunity for the amendments to happen before public hearing? What kind of are you?
Yeah, what, what normally could happen is two things. We could go back and revise the bylaw if council wished to add that and bring it back for first reading, or we could just adopt first reading today with those changes, and, or we could just adopt it as it is and bring them back the changes before the public hearing and second reading.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. So, when we're talking about the age of the manufactured homes, the 25 years does seem like quite a difference between the original 10 that was proposed. You had mentioned that the 2007 building code, something in regards to that, and I'm thinking that doesn't fit within the 25-year window, right? So?
Well, it's, it's the closest code, it's, it's the one we're going to use, I think, going forward, because remember, each year out will be another year. So, it, it just, yeah, I guess we, we just want to capture the big things. It's, we're going to be more concerned about how the manufactured home looks and what condition it's in, and that it has, you know, it's not a, it's safe. That's, that's our goal, not to specifically put a, a building code date on it, I guess.
I guess I'm just wondering if somebody has a unit that's 99, and they bring it in, and it doesn't pass the Alberta building code inspection or have that CSA? Have they just wasted that money now to purchase that unit, to bring it in and not have it, you know, pass the inspection?
You know, only if it doesn't pass the inspection, yes.
Then they would lose that, yeah. So, it is a bit of a risk to be, to go beyond that, for sure. Personally, I'd like to see that 25 years be consistent with the 2007 building code. I think that would, you know, save a little bit of money and problems, and I think you're not guaranteeing, and I think it would be difficult to see that being passed, right? So, what's that, 2007 to 22 is how many years? 15 years would be more suitable, just because, like I said, you're, there's a risk, right, for an owner to be, to be out of that money of their pocket, for sure. I'd be interested in looking at a 15 years, that's one suggestion. I would agree with Counselor Gomana on the, the maintenance of the roads, that, what type of standard that they would be kept to. I think some of them are paved, so if they were paved, then they would need to be, you know, upheld to the standard of our streets, and if they're not, then to a grade or a level or, I'm not sure if they're all paved, I'm just trying to think, you know, that is comparable to, to what our roads were conditioned, something like that. And then also in here, too, for the bylaw, when it talks about the following architectural design controls, or anywhere in the bylaw, it doesn't mention anything about the community standards bylaw, and I'm just wondering, do we also need to be including that? You know, that there needs to be a maintenance to the community standards bylaw, or it needs to be held to that standard or something? Does it need to be included in here?
Your worship, that could be included, but it's, it's normally not, we don't normally reference other documents just for the purpose, because if something changes in the other document, then it also applies. Yeah, you have to do amendment here, too. So, say if something changed in the MGA, you know, so we don't, you know, we, it's, it's a small, small thing we could mention. But they would, they would certainly, bylaw enforcement would be enforcing the community standards bylaw irregardless if that comment's in there or not. We would work with them and the health, with those association or health authority to do any enforcement, so.
I, I think I'm just wondering, because a lot of this speaks to future homes being put onto the lots, right? So, then you'll follow, follow all the architectural control design standards here, but when we're speaking of the units that are already there and grandfathered in, you did speak about, you know, replacing windows and making sure it was like that, so how would that kind of be put into here for grandfathered or existing? Or is it just maybe a change of wording or something for?
Well, I think what I was saying is that these standards would apply, like the, the maintenance and the, I guess, repair standards would apply to the, the existing units, because we're looking to raise the level across the board as to what we see.
So, they'd be enforced through this bylaw?
They'd be enforced, this bylaw, on the community standards bylaw.
Of both bylaws?
Both, yes.
Okay, okay, got you. And then also, when you talked about number two and number three of deleting the dwelling, why is it, kind of going off of what Tom's comment was, why discretionary in these aren't just removed? Like, Tom talked about, we, you know, we have manufactured home parks within the community, why would we not want to see units being, you know, if these, if these parks are held to a standard and, you know, enforcement and, you know, they're held to this architectural design control and, you know, the community bylaw standards, these are parks that are, you know, vibrant and clean and tidy, and they're looking good, that people would want to put, you know, manufactured. Would we not want to encourage that type of growth in, in the parks rather than in other zoning areas within the community? You did mention, when we update the MDP, would there be an opportunity, or do you see it happening now for that change?
It wouldn't, your worship, it wouldn't change anything as it's written now, the existing units would remain, and, and every, if there was a new unit that was going to go into that area, it still could go in, it would just need to be reviewed as a discretionary use. I guess the original direction that council gave administration was to kind of make less, move the town more forward with regular single-family development and, and have less manufactured homes in the community and, or spread throughout the community. So, that, that was the direction that this bylaw came from. If, if council is okay with keeping manufactured homes dispersed in, throughout the town, and that's, yeah, then we could look at removing at least the small parcel district from that.
So, it wouldn't be for number two and three, it would just be small parcel?
Yeah, I think so. The transitional districts, I think, are intended for something specifically transitioning to another, so it might not necessarily be appropriate for that, but, but small parcel district is, is quite extensive on, in the town's land use map, and so, it would open up a lot of areas if it would be allowed as permitted uses for, for manufactured homes.
Anyone else's thoughts on the amendments or changes? Counselor McGee?
Well, I think the, I think we, we need to have a broader discussion on, on where you're at on that piece, because I think if, I think it was stated clearly, you can't. And then, so we need to sort of understand that, and if, if it's changed now, and I'm looking, you're absolutely right, there is a large piece of our, you know, swimming pool, all of that area is, is sort of in that, sort of, you know, transitional or non-transitional, and if you, if you, if you bring a brand-new mobile home in, fine, if you, if you're allowed to, and then you would, you would expect that person to go around and talk to the neighbors. I'm not sure if that's the right way, but I think we have to have a broader discussion. And I think the, there's two things that we're trying to do, and that is to, to get the mobile home parks that we currently have cleaned up. And I, I also know that when I spoke to mobile home owners, they said, what are you doing in my business? Right?
It is a business.
I own it, and I want to do what I need to do, and all of a sudden, you guys are putting your fingers in there, and you would have heard that in spades, I know.
I heard that as well.
And so, we, and so, the balance of that 25 years came out directly out of that kind of a discussion. So, we want to be careful that we don't overreach into somebody's business, because we'll hear from, from that side of the business. Just my comments.
We do have a community standards bylaw, and slightly that, we expect all of our residents in Drayton Valley to follow, so I don't think there would be an exception to any business owners or community members. Counselor Clark, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the 25 years, it's from the adoption date, so in 2032, we could potentially have 35-year-old mobile homes, is that what we're saying?
Yes, so, the, the tying it to the date was, was a directive from council, talked about it previously. So, yeah, so, I guess the verse is, if you looked at it, is attaching it to the bylaw date, yeah, every year adds another year to the, to the requirement, so next year will be, we would allow 26-year-olds. So, if we didn't do that, it would just remain, say, 25 years forever, or do it the other way, and we attach the date to the bylaw, and it becomes longer. So, that was, that was a request from council at the last meeting that we talked about this, so I'm not specifically tied either way.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at it as if, you know, in 10 years, again, we have 35-year-olds. So, yeah, I'd be a fan of having it with the current year, but, and then, secondly, when it comes to inspections, do we, do we inspect those mobile homes off-site before they actually get to site, or we?
We, right now, we do a cursory, we require photos, and we can do a cursory evaluation, but we, we're not building inspectors, so we wouldn't get any, any more detail than that.
We do require a photo of the CSA sticker and the code.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I guess.
So, under this, under this new regime or requirement, the, the owner would have to hire a safety codes officer to file a report.
Yeah, I guess my thought there is just, you know, if, if somebody moves it to site, and then they get their inspection done and it fails, it's like, okay, now we just spent 20 grand moving this thing, and I guess my, my thought is, is doing that before it actually gets there, and I can, how do we manage that?
Yeah, it's a good point. We can, you know, we can make a note to encourage applicants to, you know, have, you know, before moving it or before purchase, to have the inspection done, you know, those kind of, would prevent costs from piling up.
So, I think that there is some areas of concern or some, I guess, some discussion around amendments happening to this today. So, with that, how does everybody feel about going forward? Do we want to consider requesting administration to revise and bring back the additional information that we discussed? Or what is the, what is the feeling? Counselor McGee?
I, I think you're looking just for first reading today.
Yes, yes, first reading could be given today, and then we could revise it for second reading.
And generally, first reading allows for that, the next steps, and?
Yeah, first reading technically is introducing the subject to council and the public, long as we, we get all the amendments in prior to the information going out for the public hearing and such.
So, what would be, and how would be the opportunity to have the revisions?
We do have a planning meeting, I believe in August, I could do the revisions, and we could discuss it there, and then if it's okay, we proceed down the, down towards public hearing and, and second and third.
And that's after first reading as presented today?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm doing is I'm looking for a councillor or member of council to make one of the motions that are on the table today. Counselor Clark?
Yes, I propose that council give first reading to bylaw 22-8- D.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any question, comment, or debate on the motion? I think that my only comment would be that, like we discussed, that there would be an opportunity at our next planning meeting to look at those amendments and revisions to the bylaw. And public hearing, public hearing date will be set then for August?
I believe that 10th is our planning meeting, and so, if we did meet it, we wouldn't be able to meet the required two weeks for the 17th, which is our next council, so push our council meeting back.
And then, that would give an opportunity, public hearing, if there's any comments from the floor, from the community and things like that. Perfect. Counselor Gomana, did you have a question? Deputy Mayor Ballas, does, no, okay, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, no, I just, so, after the first reading, just a process, so there would be a public hearing, but would there be more consultation with the manufacturer homeowners group and, and maybe a session with them just to go through this?
Yes, I, I think I will have a conversation with them, letting, letting them know what the new, or the amendments or the changes will be, just like we would notify any resident prior to the public hearing, we would notify them, yeah.
Okay, would, would there be an opportunity for us to attend as well, that session? Pardon me? Would there be opportunity for, for us to?
Well, that, that would happen at the August 10th, planning meeting, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, there is a motion on the table that council give first reading to bylaw 2208-D, and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, and we will call a brief 10-minute break at 10:13 a.m. Call the meeting back to order at 10:32 a.m. and jump back into our decision items. 8.3 land use separation setback, agenda item report, and this is where I just said I'm having trouble, I have new contacts, where am I reading? I'm like AIR 22122. Mr. White?
Thank you, worship. We have prepared a map from Google. Basically, the, the red dots are all cannabis stores that are, are in Drayton. The yellow one is prospective 150 that's going to be used, opening soon, and that's the one that came to council last fall for variance for the setback. I think it was about 130 meters instead of 150, and it was approved. The one, though, a discussion today is the very top dot in the commercial village shopping That cannabis stores, as you know, or cannabis retail stores are, are subject to setbacks in our land use bylaw, basically because we want to limit their, I guess, proximity to one another so that we don't create.
so that we don't create clusters of, of them in the community, or put them next to a land use that they, they shouldn't be close to. So our bylaw requires 150-meter setback. Just to give council some perspective, that's about 500 feet, which is the length of a block, or maybe six, the width of six streets, something like that. So it's a fair distance in terms of, of length. So again, going back, this, this cannabis retail store was inadvertently approved within the setback of a dental clinic in the Commercial Village Shopping Mall. Why this happened? Well, there's a number of reasons. Just the, the rate of current, right now, the bylaw allows land uses within shopping malls, if they're approved with a development permit, they can relocate in a shopping mall without coming to, to the town for another development permit. And so any sort of use that, that fits into the commercial districting can locate in a mall without coming to council for, for, for a development permit. So that creates some issues of turnover and rates of turnover and, and tracking all of these businesses. Secondly, some of these businesses, such as a religious assembly and, and dental and medical clinics, there's a stat, provincial statute that exempts them from requiring a business license. So again, if they don't tell us that they're locating there, perhaps we would not know immediately. So that contributed in part. The second part, we, we we should map, I guess that's, we should have mapped all of these stores and put a buffer distance around them. We have that capability, I understand, in our GIS system. And so if we would have done that, we would have seen immediately that this one encroached on another sensitive use that it shouldn't have encroached on. I've also included in the report all of the existing lists of the separations and the lists of, of uses that shouldn't be within 150 meters in, in our bylaw. Generally, the bylaw has been effective at maintaining these distances. But the exemptions and the, the, the lack of development permits make it difficult for us to track these things. And, and so, and coupled with the fact that sometimes the business owners just don't contact the town prior to setting up shop. So some of the suggestions, I guess, moving forward is how we get a better handle on, on these things is we could consider removing that exemption from the land use bylaw, and then it would require every new business to come and have a, even in a mall, to come and get a development permit. The downside of that is more red tape and delays for business owners. So generally, it's been working pretty well. Again, record and track all the sensitive uses, such as cannabis and liquor stores, on our mapping system, and use the buffering tool to ensure separation distances are not missed. Print a hard copy of this map so that we have it in our office when we do our initial checks of where these things could go. We could review and reconsider separation distances, the way they're defined. Right now, they, some, they're not consistent. For example, in the cannabis setbacks, religious assemblies are not included, but they're included in liquor stores. So I'm not sure if that is appropriate or not. So I think we should review that. And the other thing we could do is to make, to reduce complexity is to revise the 1 meter, the 150-meter setback from the property lines to the actual building footprints. Because if you look at the shopping mall property line, it's quite an extensive area. And so anything that goes in there would affect that large property line. But if you're looking at specific buildings, it's a little simpler to make the connection. And it's, I think, a little clearer. It doesn't, I mean, you can, you can sterilize a large chunk of land as well. Finally, just to reduce complexity is just, yeah, just going back and specifically list all of the uses that are, if they're, that can't be in those setback distances, so that they're not kind of grouped with another use. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Okay, I guess I will start. So just looking at this, this came to the, our attention, got brought to our attention by another cannabis store in the community, wondering why this, this new business was able to come to the community. So this is why we're having this presented to us today, is, is for that reason. And then you have suggested here of possible ways, potential solutions moving forward that we could mitigate so this wouldn't happen in the future. So right now, when we're looking at the map, are we able to zoom in a little bit? I guess, oh, perfect. Just to kind of see. So right now, in between the current, outside of budget buds, like for, I guess, would be mixers, F and L, Spirit Leaf, and things like that, we adhere to our land use bylaw. Like, there's the 150 meters between each cannabis retail, and then, I guess, away from school, care facility, clinic, medical, recreation, things like that, right?
Yes.
When we had approved, I think this was quite a while ago, the Spirit Leaf one, it was a little bit different because it was the front of the store or storefront to a school, because we measured that distance when we look at where the school is located. And that seems like it's under that 150, right? So I know that we've changed our land use bylaw most recent, or recently, so a lot of these would just be grandfathered in that way. But what you're saying is, instead of from the property line, because when you're dealing with a, like a plaza or something, it's quite a distance away, the suggestion would be from the storefront, then? Is that kind of what?
Yeah, the building footprint. Just makes it simpler to calculate who's involved and what the distance is.
And then, what was the difference, you said, between the liquor and the cannabis right now in our land use bylaw?
The listings in the cannabis do not include religious assemblies as a, as a use to be separated from where it is in the liquor stores.
And then what about tobacco? What does that fall under?
There's no, yeah, there's no setbacks for tobacco stores.
So tobacco or just retail?
Yeah, just retail.
Okay. I thought tobacco was under something else, because there was, I thought there was a request for a tobacco store to go in that same strip mall, and it was denied or something. And I'm just wondering how it fits under our, or where it fits under our land use bylaw.
It's something I can check, but I, I'm, I'm not aware of, in my readings coming across, anything that would restrict tobacco stores.
So if I was going to open a tobacco and pipe store, I would just come and get a business license? Or how would I go about doing that?
Yeah. If they can locate in a mall, all they need to do is, I guess, sign a lease with the mall owner and come and get a business license.
And so today, you're looking for, I guess, approval of the potential solutions?
Well, just, yeah, just a direction forward so that we can bring back a report that, you know, with an amendment to amend the bylaw.
Yeah, I, I would agree with the potential solutions. I think it's important so we don't have errors like this in the future. And I think it's important that when we're looking at the different general requirements and site requirements and things like that, that we're adhering to our land use bylaw, that it's simple language, that it's plain. You know, we had made the comment about our maps, and I know that you have that in here. I think that would, you know, definitely help as well to be able to, to see things like that for sure. Deputy Mayor Ballas, do you have a question?
Okay. Provincial setback is 100 meters, I believe. Is that applicable to this particular store?
Yes, it is. Yes, it would be. I guess what it would, what, it would be considered now as a, as a non-conforming use. So if, if the business ever left or closed, then it would, it would not be, another cannabis store would not be permitted to locate there. And, but as long as it exists, I guess, it has, it has its, it has its provincial approval.
I believe provincial legislation states that if it's with, it breaches that 100 meters, that AGLC will not issue a license.
They did, obviously. Because he does have, to open, he has to have his, his form.
And do we require a copy of that form?
No, we don't require. We sign it. That's what they asked us to sign back in early 2020, that it conforms to our land use bylaw. And then they go to the province for approval.
So we have never seen that approval?
We haven't seen, we wouldn't see it. But he couldn't open, the store could not operate without it, though, as part of the legislation.
Counselor McGee?
Two things for me, Madam Mayor, is the question of clarity. Right now, if you have a strip mall, you can change it without a permit, unless AGLC is involved. There's, that, because that falls under the provincial thing then, right? So not ours, but provincial.
Well, that would be up to the, the owner to satisfy the provincial requirement.
Right. And we require 150? Province requires 100?
Yes, I believe so.
How did we make a decision to, to raise that number from 100 and 150? Did we?
At the time, I wasn't here in the town, but in other municipalities, they had the, they had the option to go higher than the provincial requirement. Because some communities wanted to be more, I guess, conservative in terms of the number they allowed. So obviously, the council at the time took advantage of that option to go, to go there, go a little bit higher.
Are you guys passing notes, or? Because I missed that, sorry.
No, I, I remember that we had that discussion a while back, Counselor McGee, and then we increased for cannabis, as well as liquor licenses.
Right. So that, and that was going to be my second question, then. We use the, the sensitive uses. It's an interesting word. And I'm thinking, sensitive, sensitive. And I'm looking at the map, and I'm thinking, hmm, that's very interesting. And then if you actually put a, a number of liquor stores up on that map, I, it doesn't really feel very sensitive. It just means you got to get a license, which is kind of where I'm at, in the sense of, you talk about red tape and, and the work, and I, I just can see the mall owners coming in saying, you know, what are you doing now? Why are you in my business? Again, back to that, you're in my business, right? But I, I think, I think we have to really understand what sensitive means, and what it means to us, and as a council, what, what that actually does. And so I, I've always really struggled with, if I'm 150 meters from the door of the school, yeah, or, or not, or, you know, it just seems so redundant that you, you just, you know, you should just be naturally thinking, maybe not right next door, but in a town this size, it's, it's like it's a five-minute walk to the next one, right? To the next, the next one. And so we either start talking about restrictions and not having any more, or we, we, we talk about our, the redundancy of our, of our rules. Just my thought.
Good thoughts. Anybody else have any good thoughts or questions for administration? I think that today, this is, there's a motion needing to be made to accept this as information, and that there would be a follow-up for a future council meeting, or to just reset, accept this as information, or to request further information. So if there is a councillor, if there's no other questions, if there's a councillor that would like to make a motion. Counselor Gamanna?
I just, for, for, from administration, from Ken, so when you go through this, you mentioned you don't see, do you see any changes needed at all, or is it functional bylaw?
No, I certainly think there should be changes in terms of the mapping requirements. And I would recommend that we, we go to building footprints instead of property lines, because it, it makes the distances totally irrelevant, because you could have one large, big property, and it, it could be, because it's so large, it could be like 800 meters to the next one. And then, because, and then the next one, the two buildings could be 150 meters apart. So if we're saying the two buildings should be 150 meters apart, it's just simpler that way. And so, yeah, all of, all of the things there, I think, I'd like to bring back in a proposed amendment.
Okay. Counselor Evans?
All I was going to suggest is that perhaps you could bring recommendations to our next planning meeting.
Yeah, we can do that, too, on the 10th.
Well, he does have the potential solutions here. So these would be the potential solutions that would come forward. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I, I'm in support of the potential solutions. I think it clarifies things and, and gives the developers, if you will, clarity, if they want to, if they want to start one of these retailers. I, I guess, one question I'd ask, though, Ken, is I think we should, we should probably nail down exactly where we're measuring those setbacks from. You said the, you know, the building footprint is that 150 meters from one wall and 150 meters from the other, is at the center of the building? Just for, just for clarity, I know we're only talking about a few meters, but that could come into play.
I think the definition through to Counselor Evans would be that from the closest building wall to the exterior, the closest building wall would be the definition of.
Yeah. I, I would just make that abundantly clear. Those few meters could, could make a difference. That's all. Thank you.
As part of the report under legal and risk implications, you have that all municipalities carry legal risks, and any decisions rendered could be appealed, provided that the appeal is upon a question of law or jurisdiction. Is that because the decision was made, or is that moving forward? Or is that if we were to appeal and say, this store can't open?
Yeah, I think we, you know, we, you know, we did get it right. We signed that form. We shouldn't have signed that form, provincial form. And so we can't really fault the business owner for, for continuing on in the process. So to remove him would likely fall on the town and some expenses for his, you know, what he's invested. So I think, but moving forward, like once, once that space is vacated, it goes back to what the bylaw says.
Hey, any other questions, or is there a member of? Okay, any other questions, or is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor McGee?
We should probably make a motion that, that we ask administration to bring back a fulsome report to a future council meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So there was a motion on the table that we request future information or additional information at a future council meeting. I imagine that that would come to the planning meeting, and then we'll continue on as we look at the potential solutions here that you've suggested today.
Yes, whatever council wishes.
Okay, are there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And we do have an addition to the agenda that I did forget to mention when we came back from our break. It will be 8.8 under our decision items, and it will be engineering assessment report for the Park Valley Pool. And then I believe that I will need a motion, a member of council, to make a motion to accept the addition to the agenda. Counselor Gomana, thank you for that, and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And did you get that sippy now? Okay, 8.8 decision item, engineering assessment report, Park Valley Pool. The motion was made by Counselor Gomana. Okay, moving on to our decision items, 8.4 PCP milestone for submission. Good morning, Aisha. How are you?
I'm good. I'm just looking for the picture. Okay, good morning, council. So today I'll be presenting on something that we hope to, to submit to FCM soon.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
You're just talking quiet.
Yeah, that's a feeling. Okay, so this is a program that's been going on for three years. So I just wanted to share with council some updates on what happened last year and what progress we've made over the past three years. I think most councils have seen this a bunch of times already, but let's see. So can we make it to a slide, like, to focus or? Okay. Right. So let's go to the first one here. So Drayton Valley actually joined this program back in 2015, and we have like a lot of reasons listed down there why we entered into this program. But when I first started, my manager, he told me, okay, what you need to focus on is these two things here, reduce energy costs and also to optimize opportunities. But when we do things that are good for the environment, we also get things that are good for the social and economic. So it's always good to know that it's not just one benefit when we do climate action items or programs or initiatives. Moving on, okay, so this is the crux of the PCP milestone program. They have a framework of steps we take. So we have the first step, which is the milestone one, is create a baseline of inventory and have a forecast. The second one is to get, to put down an emissions target. The third one is to develop a local action plan, you know, have a list of what you want to do, when you want to do it, how much money you need to put into it and all that. Then actually implement a plan, and then monitor the progress and report on the results. So so far, we've been monitoring the progress, so we're kind of following a milestone five already. And we have already progressed milestone one, milestone two, milestone three. We got milestone three back in 2021, which is just last year. If you could see the award there, it's on the desk, if you guys want to take a look, or do you want me to bring it?
Yeah, do you want to grab it and we'll hand it around just for some of the new councillors that might have, might not have seen it? We're very proud of this award and every milestone that we get.
Just so everyone knows, like, these are actual puzzle pieces that come out, so we went to more, to complete the set. Thank you for that.
Yeah, don't break it. It's very important to us.
Okay, so next step is we want that number four piece. And also just so that everyone knows, we have this report here, the local energy stewardship plan. So this lists all of our goals, our plans, I kind of, anything that I need to do, programs, initiatives, it has to align with whatever we have in that report. And, okay, because we are following the PCP protocol, the, the way they categorize things is a bit specific. It's not a bit specific, it's really specific, what goes into the reporting and all that. So I just wanted to clarify to everyone first that there are two inventories that we do, two targets, two plans. The first one is what we call the corporate JSH inventory, but just to be clear, it's not corporate, it's actual municipal. Like, what does a municipal do, have any control over, that comes under the corporate inventory. Then anything else that happens within our boundaries, that is the community inventory. So I guess this is the fun part. What happened last year, or two years ago? Okay, let's see. First of all, just to refresh everyone's minds, we have this corporate targets to reduce emissions by 8% and a committee target to reduce emissions by 6%. These are compared to their 2015 levels. So I've been using the same way to actually measure. It's the same data, it's the same data sources, it's the same categories. We don't change anything. So these are from our actual invoices, from our actual receipts. Everything is recorded and actual savings, not something I came up with, just to be clear. So how did we do? We've actually done pretty well. Because of COVID, we have reduced our emissions by quite a lot, 20%. And even post-COVID, we're still there, there, like, just 2% higher, which is not too bad considering, because we were fully open last year, right? Overall, for community, we got about 20% reduction, so that's how we got that 16% there. And just now, let's focus on our municipality. So first line is just showing you the emissions and waste, because we have to take all the waste that is within town of Drayton Valley and not just municipal waste. It's 88% of our emissions, which is quite a lot. So we, this is how we kind of target our programs, like, why we want to look at waste, why we want to make sure waste goes down, because it's the highest emissions, it's 88%, that's quite huge. The second thing I wanted to draw your attention to is the energy use and energy expenditure. Can, if you can see that small blue spot there, that is actually streetlights. So our energy use for streetlights is actually really small, but our expense is 3%. So out of our energy bills, about one third is for streetlights, which, you know, big issue for me, but, you know, that's how it is. So we kind of want to target, why is that, how do we get that down? Which is why we engage with MSC and NCCAC on the tariff reviews. And also, there's other two points there. We use gas, electricity, obviously, and of course, fuel is for our fleet. This is where our public works or parks, whenever they use their vehicles, I actually have their invoices and I track those as well. And we don't use that much petrol, actually. We don't really spend that much on it, but it does go up because of the carbon, carbon tax, and of course, the fuel prices are going up as well. But as you can see, although we just use 3% of overall energy is electricity, 73% is paying for it. So the, it just does a very unbalanced thing going on there that I just wanted to, you know, show here, okay? But this is also another interesting graph. How have we actually progressed over the years? And, okay, this is, this doesn't look really good for me, because our electricity and gas and fuel use actually went up from 2020 to 2021. But we actually got savings, like, we reduced our energy savings by about $100,000 from 2020 to 2021, which is quite interesting, because usually when you use more, you actually pay more, right? And our tariffs actually went up last year, but we did reduce it. And most of that is just through optimizing our energy bill. So just, you know, fixing our rates, it really does help reduce the expenditure by a lot. Okay, the second one is the emissions. So once again, I'm showing you be compared to 2015, 2020, and 2021, because 2020 is a weird year. And you can see that we have actually managed to reduce our energy use by a lot, almost, I think, half. Yep, definitely more than half there. And it really shows like how we've been, we've been becoming much more energy efficient in how we use our operations in the past few years. And of course, this is another interesting chart, I think, council like this. These are the 15 largest energy consumers for our fleet of buildings. And as you can see, this is, I guess, thanks to Heather and Derek, they actually reduced Omniplex energy use by, I think, about 10, 15% right there, from 2020 to 2021. And you have to remember, 2020, it makes sense, because it was COVID. But 2021, we had full operation, even though it's reduced operation, everything is running. So I don't know how they did it, but they actually did it. The one that doesn't look very well is actually CTC, where I'm at, so we probably have to worry a bit more on that. Other things that were happening was that we finally closed down our old water treatment plant, and just by doing that, we have reduced the whole wastewater segment by a third. And then public works has also moved to a new complex, so we have reduced operations at three of our other facilities. Okay, so that was our corporate emissions and energy use. Do we want to take a question first before we move on, because it's a lot, you know?
She's had a couple of questions. One, kind of going back, when you mentioned about the energy expenditures, the 30% for the streetlights. How, how many of the lights do we own and how many do Fortis own? Because we always talked about that, and are they LED? Can we go to solar? Like, how do we get that?
There's, they're already LEDs.
They're already LEDs?
They're already LEDs.
And were we not trying to sell our streetlights or something to Fortis?
Yeah, even if we do that, we still have to pay them for maintenance fees, so it wouldn't even.
It doesn't matter at all.
Yeah, and we have to pay them for that privilege as well. So it's, it's a very weird situation going on.
It is.
Yes.
And I know, well, we've talked about adding new lights on the ring road, right? And looked at solar for there. I guess there'd be a potential maybe for discussions at budget time for replacement, maybe for solar lights or something in other areas, right?
Yeah, we just have to look into the safety of it. And I also wanted to point out that we've had this discussion with other municipalities across Alberta. All of them are having this similar problem where streetlights is a huge chunk of their expenses.
It just is, and you honor for that environmental, I can't remember now what it is, through safety, that you have to make sure your streetlights are.
Yes, you have to be sure they are meeting their requirements.
Design, yeah.
Yeah.
And then also, on the next page, when we look at the corporate emissions by sector, why is the waste kind of went back up in 2021? Like, it was, it was high, and then it dropped in 2020, and then went back up.
I wonder, because if we did talk about fixing the scaling, the scale house, so it could just be a more accurate representation right now.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Are there any other questions kind of mid-presentation? Counselor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The things that come to my mind, and maybe we'll talk about them at the end, but it's about measurement. And it's about, I'm a bit of a skeptic, I think, somehow, but can we actually measure it? And then the other thing I was thinking about it was if we at some point in time could put a dollar value. So by doing this, you have saved this. And so it's important that you continue to do that. Not only have you saved the planet, but you saved this. And so I think that's the, the piece for me. But on one of the slides, just the second slide back, you talked about an unbalanced thing. I didn't quite understand what you meant by an unbalanced thing. Can you just?
Well, for me, like, okay, if we're spending, we're using this much electricity, like 30% electricity, 30% gas, 30% vehicles, then the spending should kind of be proportionate. But like, for this one, it's not proportionate, especially if you look at the bottom graph here. I don't think this is working, okay? Natural gas is 50%, but based on our expenditure, it's only 12%. Like, it, it just seems really funny to me. It doesn't, it doesn't really match. It's just the way the rates are, I guess, but, you know, it's not something we can do much about. But I just wanted to show that there is something going on there.
Okay, and something that we can't control.
We can't truly control, yeah.
And lastly, the, when you look at the, the graph, the vertical one, what's, what's a sewer blower?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, too. Sewer, were you?
Well, Shelley's here, she can answer.
Shelley's here? Okay.
So did we, did we, did we turn the iteration down to, to achieve those things? Like, that's a dramatic drop.
It is huge.
I think that you optimized some of the pumps or something there, like, limitors.
So we got a new blower, is what we're hearing. So, yeah, that's a significant.
Okay, well, it's just curious.
That's funny, we all have the same question.
It just shows you, like, we have a team that is efficient anyway, so, yeah.
Absolutely. Did you have any other questions?
Just one last one, and we are trying our best in our community. And I was hoping Cody would be back for this question, but are we working with, with the county at all, or they just running their own program just outside?
They're running their own program. We try to match where we can. Like, I do know my counterpart in Brazil, but we have our own facilities, they have their own facilities. There's not really much we could collaborate on, on that for municipal.
And so, Aisha, they have somebody that is a colleague, or at least does a similar thing that you're doing? You're communicating once in a while?
Yes, we do communicate.
Thanks.
Counselor Gomana, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. No, just when you think about, you know, we replaced a piece of machinery, and now we have dropped the usage, right? So during your research, would there be some suggestions like that coming to the council saying, you know, we should put a efficient, I don't know, furnace or something, and then it will help to reduce our usage?
Yeah, when we come up with any initiatives or programs, we try to see what are the actual cost savings, and those are things that we can actually calculate. It's just we calculate, and then it's based on those assumptions. So, you know, if you don't operate it correctly, then you might not get as much results, savings as you wanted. So that is why the measurement part, I think, Tom, you were asking about that. The measurement part is important, like, we need to make sure that there's a meter there that we can actually see. When we change this, this is what we're getting, because if not, like, we're just putting new things without actually reaping the benefits. But so far, the huge ones are definitely much more efficient than the older ones. Okay, so that is for our municipality. Let's look at our actual community. Not much of a surprise there, our energy use stayed more or less the same. I feel like more people are traveling now, so about 50% of our energy use is on transport. And with the way that they calculate the emissions for electricity and for gasoline versus diesel, then you can also see that emissions has actually reduced since 2015, so that has really helped a lot in my reporting, anyway. I didn't want to spend so much time on this, because I wanted to show you what's next. So we have this report, once again, we have the inventory from last year, so we are showing that we are monitoring our progress. For PCP milestone four, we need to provide a description to what actions we have implemented and what is implementation scheduled. So we have actually done quite a lot since we came out with this report a couple of years ago. I can go through every one of these actions one by one, if council wants to, but basically, we have three municipal goals, main goals. One is to reduce emissions from our municipal operations. The other one is the landfill emissions, and the third one is to diversify energy supply. And most of the projects that I've been working on, they will definitely fall under one of these goals. So the main one is, of course, the MEM program that helps with the facilities' energy use. And then we have the food cycle program that comes under the landfill. And every one of these actions, also called action, we have someone leading the project, and we already know sort of what is the budget that goes into the project. And it's not just a one-person thing. This is a whole organization. Like, when we talk about the pool, then, and that, and the IPTD team is leading that. And when we're talking about, you know, the solar panels or the fleet, then it's public works that's leading that. So it's different people doing different things, but all towards the same goals. And I just reported it right here for everyone. And I just reported it right here for everyone. And showing that we have progress on this, that we have budget items on it, we have people on it. This is what we could um, submit to FCM in order to get our next milestone. So um, same thing with community action plan. We have well, we actually have quite a lot of actions that are pending based on um provincial um, funding and provincial decisions right there. Um, the national energy building codes, we can't do anything about that right now. But we do know what's the progress. So we're showing that we are doing something there. Um, we're working on the seed program there. Let's see. Um, I guess we have businesses as well that are related to energy. We have Bluebird and we have Metal Next. Um, they are part of our community and they are doing things that are good for the environment. So we put them in there as well. Um, let's see. I guess the big one is the empower committee actions. That's the last one, the chemical number four. Okay, so we have done quite a lot of partnerships with EPBR, with the library. We have uh, the garden party that's happening tomorrow. I hope council could come. Uh, all of these different events to engage the committee in order for them to take climate action. And I think most of our collaborations have been very successful. So we hope to do more in the future. And that is also where the Agents of Change project comes in, which is where we start off with that garden party tomorrow. Where now we're not only empowering our agencies, but we're also empowering the committee, committee members. If they want to take action, we could help fund and support them in that way. So like I shown you, there's, let's see. Um, nine corporate actions that were listed, um, except for one that has been postponed and one pending research. Most of them are either in progress or completed. For the community, we also have nine actions. One has been discarded. That is the one I think on this H P. And then others are already in progress. Four of them are already in progress. So I think we've shown pretty good progress. I think we're ready to submit this for FCM's next um, what do you call it, puzzle piece? Um, and that is what we're bringing to council today. Uh, if we can get a decision, then we could submit this for the next half on our milestone. Yep, and okay, the last few slides are just the actual numbers. If anyone wants to look into this, um, these are based on our invoices and bills and everything. Um, this will go onto our website as well. Okay, and I think that's it for me. It's a bit long.
Thank you very much for that. You always do a fantastic job. We appreciate it. Are there any questions? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I should do. So when we, we've enrolled in this program, um, a lot easier calculations. Do all municipalities follow the same kind of calculation tables? Or there's a standard, I'm assuming there's.
There's a standard platform that they use. So we, they follow the same um, protocol. So how they define, like, if they see um, electricity from bills, then everyone just follows the same thing. And then they have the same uh, factors to calculate their emissions as well. So it's standard across Canada.
Okay, and then um, with power, you mentioned that we were using kind of a hedging uh, strategy there, right? So we do somewhat have control over price.
Some control, but not that much, yeah.
And I guess with the coming year and years, you know, we're going to see natural gas going up.
Yes.
Um, so it's going to be detrimental to our, our bottom line, but sort of is what it is, right? There's not much you can do about that other than using a hedging strategy. So um, do we do that with both gas and electricity?
We have different retailers for gas and electricity.
Um, and we hedge both of them?
We hedge both of them. Uh, we have locked in the price for gas. It's actually, it's actually lower than what we're paying for carbon taxes, like two, two point five per gigajoules, which is pretty good deal. But it also kind of suggests that then we're actually paying more for the tax than the actual usage of it. But once again, it is what it is.
Counselor Commander?
Thank you. Um, so I, I believe we've, we've uh, looked at changing the, the service provider recently, right? So um, are we seeing some um, savings on that? Or are you just, are we still monitoring and trying to figure that out?
Uh, we, well, um, I guess if we had stayed with the previous service provider, it would have been higher. Yeah, so it would still be increasing, but not as high as if we had stayed with the same one.
Counselor McGee?
I should, maybe I missed it, but um, if, if we go to the next level, which I, I'm sure you're going to get approval to do that. Does FCM come back and audit uh, to, to be sure that we, we're, we're not?
Uh, yeah, because I actually um, I submit this as well to them. So if they want to audit, then it's all there for them. But I, I don't think they actually have done any actual audits of what we're doing. It's kind of on a, based on trust system.
Okay, so that, 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 that particular sheet, the last sheet on our report
Yep.
um, is something that they could look through and quickly notice that what, what we, you know, what's occurred.
Yep.
By numbers.
Yes. And also when we report on the different actions, a lot of it are um, things that they can check on. Like, yes, we got this fund from this person. They could check on that. And we do um, promote it on our socials. So I'll be putting those kind of proof in our, my reporting as well. So it's not a, here's a statement. It's going to be coming with a lot of evidence as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you very much for that. And we're excited to uh, see our another little.
Oh, sorry, it's a decision item.
Oh, sorry?
It's a decision item.
Oh, sorry, there needs to be a motion. And you're going to make that motion. That's just what I was going to say next. I was just so excited about the whole thing that.
So the recommendation, uh, and I would make that in the form of a motion, that council directs administration to submit a progress update report to FCM for PCP milestone for recognition.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any questions, comment or debate on the motion? There is a motion that council direct administration to submit a progress update report to FCM for PCP milestone for recognition. Now, ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you again very much.
Right, thank you. And please come to our garden party tomorrow.
Uh, Sabina, do you think you could send out a calendar invite to us? So we all kind of have it?
Yeah, it's not in there yet.
Yeah, if you could send it to Sabina, just so we all have it in our calendars. Wonderful. Um, and then uh, I'm just going to ask before, do we need to go to nine point eight? Okay, so then what we're going to do is we're going to move on to the department reports. Nine point eight, the C A O administration, FOIP section twenty-four one A. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? If we could get the motion up on the screen, please? Counselor Evans?
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that uh, council move to a closed session at uh, eleven twenty-two for item. What are we looking at here?
C A O administration.
For item, C A O administration, FOIP section of the July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting agenda pursuant to section twenty-four one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Thank you very much for that wonderful motion.
It's a mouthful.
Is, or do you have a question on the motion?
I, I do have a question on the motion and that, and uh, I've just met Al and, and Al's uh, in the council chamber as an interested citizen.
Welcome, Al.
He, he watched the last session and we went in to close at a similar time at eleven. Nobody seemed to know uh, it sort of just dropped off. And so when do you start? Uh, when do you come back or those kinds of things? And I thought, I thought it was a valid question. So I think I can be helpful in that and saying that generally what we would do then is to everybody uh, is away from the chambers and except for council, uh, the uh, direct uh, C A O and whoever he might need to have that discussion. And then we would generally come back at, at one o'clock. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, we reconvene after lunch. That way administration goes away, can have lunch, and then we come back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And anybody that's online too, that um, we will be returning at one o'clock. Um, I will ask all in favor. Uh, that is carried. We are now moving into closed. One P M sharp. And jump back into our decision items. And I believe we left off at eight point five, community grants. Third quarter allocation. Mr. Starnes, this is you. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Just before you start that, Sabina, did you get, we came out of closed, did you get that uh, motion to come out of closed?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Um, twelve oh three.
Twelve oh three, we came out. And who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
Colin.
Colin?
Yep, yep.
Oh, I guess Colin did. I thought it was Rick. It was Colin that made the motion. Thank you very much. The floor is yours. Welcome, welcome back. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you, councillors. Um, so yeah, so I'm just going through the third quarter grant applications. Uh, we received five applications for the community events grant in the third quarter and one application for the youth art, heritage and culture grant um, for quarter three. Um, so we basically, we started out the year with twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this year we had thirty thousand. Um, but basically twenty-five thousand dollars is allocated to the grants. Uh, as of right now, we have twelve thousand six hundred and fifty dollars remaining before these grants are either approved or amended. So just to go through the five community events grants, we had the Drayton Valley Community Foundation apply for their DV one hundred event, sorry. Event on September ninth and tenth, they requested five thousand dollars. Uh, the Drayton Valley Historical Society and Museum uh, have applied for seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for their outdoor movie nights on July fifteenth and August twelfth. EPBR Parks Council has applied for one thousand dollars for their choose your own adventure poker rally for Parks Day on July sixteenth. Uh, S B G Straight Boss Gym has uh, requested six thousand dollars for their premier provincial jujitsu tournament on September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And the Steelers Ball Team uh, has applied for, they didn't uh, request anything in particular. Um, but we'll get to that later. But for their all men's and all ladies slow pitch ball tournament on September tenth and eleventh. And then the youth arts heritage and culture grant, uh, Frank Matic High School has applied for two thousand one hundred dollars for a national student leadership, leadership summit in Indianapolis, Indiana for three of their students, which goes from July eighteenth to twentieth. So um, I don't know if everyone has the spreadsheet, the tracking sheet that uh, Cora has kept track of for us. But um, basically, I'll just go through them one by one. The Drayton Valley Community Foundation, and now this is the community grants uh, committee that went through these and are the recommendations from going through these on July fourth. For the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, they requested five thousand dollars. Um, we are, the committee is recommending not giving them the five thousand dollars, but instead giving them five thousand dollars in in-kind contribution. Um, the reason for that is we've, we've already given them ten thousand dollars plus in-kind support for two other events. And um, we do have money that we have to keep for Q four applications and, and other grant applications. So that's why we've recommended that. Uh, for the Drayton Valley Historical Society and Valley Museum Outdoor Movie Nights, they're, we are recommending that they get the full of seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents to run their two outdoor movie nights. The E P P R, E P B R Parks Council, uh, choose your own adventure event, they asked for a thousand. We're recommending giving them the full amount of a thousand dollars. For S B G's premier provincial jujitsu tournament, which is Alberta's first two-day tournament um, and the province's first teen super matches. Uh, we are recommending three thousand four hundred dollars um, under the six thousand requested. Again, um, we'd like to give them the full amount, but we have to keep in mind that we may have more applications for Q four. So we gave them as much as we thought we could and still have a little bit left in the coffers for Q four. Uh, for the Steelers Ball Team, their all men's and ladies slow pitch tournament. Uh, we recommended a hundred fifty dollars for in-kind, which covers the cost of the in-town rental diamonds. Um, that, that they'll be using both sets of diamonds, Brazos counties and the town. So that would cover that. And the three hundred and fifty dollars we're recommending covers uh, equipment rental, rental equipment they'd have to get and some gas and, and minor miscellaneous items. And for the National Student Leadership Summit, for the three students at seven hundred dollars apiece, uh, we're recommending that they get the full amount of two thousand one hundred dollars. And uh, if, uh, so we've got four recommendations there. The first recommendation uh, is that council approve the third quarter Town of Drayton Valley's community grant allocations for a total of seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents as presented. Uh, alternatives are that council approved the third quarter Town of Drayton Valley's community grant allocations for a total of blank as amended by council. Uh, alternative three, that council directed administration to bring the community grants third quarter allocation report back to the regular meeting of council on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two for discussion and decision. Or four, that council accept the community grants third quarter allocation report for information. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Um, so for the DV one hundred, what is, what kind of in-kind support? Um, is it people or equipment or?
It would be equipment and people, um, moving barricades. Um, I guess. So just going back, yeah, we had, yeah, in-kind support, street cleaning barricades, uh, providing C P O. Any kind of anything they need and ask for. I, I know there's a bunch of stuff that they either get rec staff or public works to do a bunch of stuff. Um, basically whatever they kind of need. We, we've been, I think, pretty good at giving them that support and, and helping them, them out in that way.
Right, and so they're asked this year is, is dollars, right?
For, for this, yes, for this, this particular quarter, quarter three, they're asking for, for money. And again, uh, that, the recommendation is for in-kind, but that's up, up to you guys.
So typically, they do ask for the five thousand for the event, DV one hundred, plus in-kind, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Counselor Commander?
I was just uh, thinking the same uh, kind of thinking. How much did we give last year for, just dollar value?
Uh, last year, we gave them five, two thousand five hundred and five thousand in twenty twenty-one.
Two thousand five hundred in dollar value?
So seventy-five hundred dollars in total. And this year, we're at ten thousand dollars plus in-kind support so far.
So did we, that include in-kind last year or was that additional?
That's, uh, in-kind would have been additional, I believe. But it doesn't specify.
No. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm good, as is.
You're fine, Mrs. You're happy with it? I'm just kind of listening to your comment. There still is a, a fourth quarter, right? There still is. Um, so after this, um, let's say that you go with recommendation, the recommendation of administration, there'll be twelve thousand dollars or how much will be left?
There will be five thousand two hundred and sixty-seven.
There'll be five thousand two hundred dollars for the next quarter, yeah. Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
Um, the uh, three uh, students, is that a, is that a separate application for the youth? Or giving them the full amount?
Uh, it was, it's just covering some of their costs. It's not covering the whole cost. It's covering their travel. Um.
Right, but we're, are we giving that amount too, to them?
Seven hundred dollars each would go towards their, their trip, the entirety of the trip. So they're, they're the one, and, and I'm not sure exactly how it works, but from my understanding and from what I learned reading it is that they're one of the only schools in Canada to be invited to this American summit. So um, there's three chi, uh, three students and two adult chaperones going with them. So the seven hundred dollars would help cover the cost for travel expenses and, and whatnot for, for the students.
But that's a separate bank account?
Yeah, well, it, it's all under the same pot. So, and I, I believe in years past, there were separate accounts. But at the start of this year, they, we threw all the money into one big pot for all the grants. So it's all coming out of the same pot.
Any other? Any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Oh, so Colin, you would like to make a motion?
Sure.
Or you have a question?
Where are we here?
Thanks, Rick.
I, I make a motion that council approve the third quarter Town of Drayton Valley's community grant allocations for a total of seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six twenty-five as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, question, or debate on the motion? Councilor McGee?
Only one. I appreciate the recommendations, because we, we have a struggle sometimes. Thank you.
We do have a struggle sometimes, sometimes more, some more than others. And I think that you're happy. I take it with the, the new approach that we're, you like it, yeah, I like it too. I appreciate the recommendations. I do have a question, not so much in regards to this quarter, but I know that the last quarter, there was an individual that had applied, and it wasn't recommended, it was for the competition fees and travel expenses. So, I'm wondering how that would differ than, let's say, the ball, or the Straight Boss Gym, or the National Student Leadership, like, why wouldn't have that qualified then? I know that, I think Lola was still going to work with them or something on the application to ensure, because it wasn't filled out properly or something?
Yeah, so, so the, the reason that one was, I guess, declined was that the, the criteria states that it's got to be a national or international or event, and the one that before was just for regional. They weren't going outside of the province. Are you talking about the volleyball one?
Yeah, that's the Isabella Choi. Yeah, that, I think it was the volleyball. Yeah, it was. So, I guess I'm just asking how, I, I know that, that it does, does say here that it didn't fit the criteria with national, international. So, then I guess I'm looking at, like, at the ball tournament or the, the jujitsu tournament, which I'm in favor of both, but, right, they're locally.
Yeah, so, again, so that, so that one that they applied for, basically, it's under the Roger Coles, and it states if to, to apply for that one or to, I guess, qualify for that one, it has to be an, an international or, or national event.
Yeah.
Whereas these local ones are just local events, so it's a different, different pot, different criteria.
Different everything.
Yeah.
So, I guess why my question is then, is Lola was going to go back with her because she felt like she wasn't in the right pot, that she shouldn't apply for that? So, maybe what I'm looking for is clarity that we did go back and.
As far as I know.
Because I don't see her name on here again, so I'm thinking, was there something else, or how?
I do believe Lola did reach out to her, and I do believe that they were working into it, but I, I'm guessing.
You don't know where it's at?
That they maybe, they didn't fit the criteria, and so they didn't read by. But I would, I can check with Lola.
If you could, that would be great, yeah, because I just didn't see it come on here, and I thought that it would be included as well, right? So, I was just kind of questioning that. I know that we like to encourage or help when the organizations or individuals come to make sure they fit in the right box, and I think this was, might have just been a case where they didn't fit in the right box, they should have been somewhere else, and ended up being. So, I was, I'm hoping that we're still continuing to work with the individual, right, in some sort of way, if we can. And then I just wanted to add that, yeah, I'm also happy with the recommendation, and I appreciate it here today. Deputy Mayor Ballas?
I see that the museum has something in here as well. Is, is this to be addressed that, this time?
The museum, as, the outdoor movie? For the movie night? Yes, that's included in it.
Yep, you did.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other comment, question, or debate, Bill, do you want to shut your mic off unless you have something additional to add? I will ask, there's a motion on the table that council approved the third quarter Town of Drayton Valley community grant allocations for a total of seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five, twenty-five cents as presented. I was going to say as amended, but as presented, and I'll ask Colin in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much for that. Okay, and then we are moving along to the eight point six Sustainability Committee Terms of Reference, July twenty twenty-two. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Chair, and through to council. I'm opening up again my computer, apparently. It's always when it comes up. So, thank you again. So, basically, this report is in front of you, based on the committee, that the Sustainability Committee that comes together and supports the community, of course, with all the variant activities and initiatives that they support. So, they have been engaged in multiple projects and initiatives over the past years, with various degrees of interaction with municipal departments and external organizations. So, there were discussions happening, internal debate happened about the objectives and the opportunities of the past and the future for the leading and the request for amending basically the terms of reference in order to provide better direction to the community, to the committee. So, the current terms of reference are attached to the report, but also a draft of the new terms of reference. There are some changes made in those terms of reference to accommodate those requests within the, in the committee. So, the opportunities and the mandates are still a review and support, and collaborate on initiatives from external parties. So, basically, initiatives that come to the committee and known to the committee, and that they can respond to that. Execute committee lead initiatives. That's kind of a new addition to it, that they have more ability to execute initiatives and take a leading role. Request existing capacity service support from municipal departments. Those requests will go through basically the CIO, and they are the existing capacity, what service can be provided already by different departments. And fourth, manage the community grant program, as we did just right now. Of course, the community program is now managed by administration, but there's the opportunity to provide this as a service by this community group, the Sustainability Committee, because there is, of course, representation of administration on it. There is also representation from council and from community members. So, to make it a part of this group, that means that the terms of reference are addressed, to make that happen. If we take a look into financial implications, there are none. Basically, the service providing is a little bit higher in the sense that this committee can do more initiatives themselves and have more teeth to collaborate with organizations that come to them, or appoint initiative takers within the committee itself, or still, of course, request support from town administration, but then through the CIO, because they cannot direct themselves, and have the ability to be part of the community grant program, and basically take on that program in assessing and assigning, or at least recommending those to council. So, with that, there are, there's that recommendation, of course, that council approve the Sustainability Committee Terms of Reference, July twenty twenty-two as presented, or amended, or bring it back to a future council meeting for further discussion. If there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions? You want me to start? Okay, sure. So, I'm looking at the Terms of Reference, the one that was approved by council on February ninth of twenty twenty-two, and then the draft to be discussed today. I'm not seeing a lot of changes, which is probably a good thing in a sense, but then I'm wondering, I guess I want to ensure that we're not, haven't missed anything, because I think that this committee is a bit unique in structure that it does deal with a lot of events and kind of hands-on and things like that, and engagement and things like that. So, I just wanted to make sure that everything was kind of encompassed in here, and that we didn't, didn't miss anything. And I guess what I'm saying is that I don't see a lot of changes, and I, I hope that we've captured it all in here with the intent. I was, think maybe I was expecting something a little bit different. Not that I'm disappointed, but that's all I'm going to start with. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Ballas?
Was there a budget previously included?
There was. There was ten thousand dollars for Sustainability Committee. I did see here that that would be discussed at budget, but I thought we had included it in our budget discussions that we already had. No, Vera's not here.
But it should be part of the terms, I would think, if we were doing that, right?
So, thank you for that question, and through to Councilor Ballas. So, I did not make the change to that based on the existing terms of reference, because a budget question would, of course, come through the budget process. If there's any addition or change to that budget, that basically is for the committee. So, terms of reference that were existing over there did not include that and say there's no budget set for this committee. So, if that's coming to budget process, then, of course, that is a possibility, which automatically includes a terms of reference change at that moment, because we now took just the current terms of reference from this committee. That was my question, yeah. How do we appoint that, right? And thank you, and through to the chair, to Councilor Ballas. So, basically, it's a component that we did not want to lose from this committee. So, that's why there is that sustainability, that environmental component, still part of this committee, that basically the, the people from the public, the appointed people from the public should bring to the table as well. Not that it means that everybody of those three appointed should be coming out of that direction only, but at least to make sure that we don't lose that component within this committee. Because basically, the sustainability, you could say, it's the sustainability of the committee, sustainability of the social aspect of the committee, the environmental aspect of, of the community. So, we didn't want to lose it and scratch it out of there, keep it in, but it should be read as this is, let's say, expertise that these committee members bring to the table.
I'm just wondering if it couldn't be changed. I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Ballas, is that when you look at the mandate, and it talks about undertake initiatives with regards to the overall quality of life, quality of life and environment, including strategies, projects, et cetera. I wonder if it couldn't say up to three community representatives who have, who have experience, or, I don't know, interest in the quality of life and environment within our community, community, or something, something that fits more of the mandate, because we don't really talk about climate action knowledge, and that was one of the things that we had talked about at the meeting in order to change the terms of reference, that we wouldn't really be dealing with a lot of that at this table was the climate. It would be more based on events and, and sustainability, quality of life and things like that. I think there would be room, but we didn't see a lot of projects that would be climate focused, right? So, to have that as a number one quality for a committee member, I think, is quite significant, where I'd rather see that replaced with quality of life or sustainable community even, right? Who is interested in a sustainable community, right? Just something like that. Because we speak to that in our mandate, right? We don't talk about climate action knowledge. And I know that when we had a discussion at our agenda setting, I had said to Rob, like, without going back to the table, would there be room for amendments today? And he thought, as long as we're not rewriting it all, we could make a motion to approve with amendments today. We felt that there was a a need for some changes. I would definitely be in favor of that one. Yep. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I think the operative word there is up to three, so that could mean zero or three, right? So, I think maybe we're reading a little too much into that. Or, I mean, a simple, simple change there would just be, instead of climate action knowledge, those that align with the objectives set forth within this terms of reference.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Two cents?
That was great, thank you. Counselor Manon?
Yeah, no, I just want to, you know, like, like mentioned, you know, we had a discussion. I don't see a whole lot of changes that came out of that discussion here, so in a way, it's good, you know, this is similar to any other committee that, that we have. In a way, I don't think it has captured what we've discussed for the last while. So, I still have the same fundamental concerns that I had with the other committees' frameworks. I don't think this, this doesn't still have teeth, enough teeth to, for the committee to do anything. So, again, advisory, it would be an uphill battle for the committee members to feel like they're, they're bringing value in that case. Just my two cents.
Yeah, I would agree somewhat with you in the same, for especially particularly with some of the committees. I don't want to hold this up, though, however, because we are in July, and like I mentioned, we have lanterns on the pond. We need to order lanterns. We need to be reaching out to EPVR, because I know they want to be partnering with that. During our organizational meeting in October, will be an opportunity, I think, to review. I think if we start that review, maybe in September after the holidays, of all of our terms of reference, because in here, it speaks to, on a yearly basis, right? So, I think if we can, perhaps, it could be captured even in the motion or something, that there might be a couple amendments today, I think, to push us through and get these things going. But I think that maybe September in a planning meeting would be a recommendation to review our terms of references prior to our organizational meeting in October for all of our internal committees, as well as having that feedback of the committees that we sit on, what value, if there's maybe another committee that's missing, et cetera, like that. But I think we need to get ahead of it, so we're not doing the same thing as we did yet, you know, this year, right? We want to make sure that we're having these committee meetings every month and staying on top. So, maybe perhaps if we could just see the change that other Colin or I had mentioned up to the three community representatives, just to kind of capture that. And then when it comes to the financial implications on, in the report here, it does say the committee will receive the mandate, excuse me, through the terms of reference to allocate these funds within the established guidelines. Like, I'm just wondering, does that need to be included in here then? Or what do you think? Like, and I can't remember right now, and Elvira's not here. I thought we allocated ten thousand dollars, right? But I thought that there was, because we talked about there's that money there, and that it would be carried over, because that's how we'll pay for the lanterns on the pond and the events, right?
I thought there was two, or there should have been, or a budget committed through this.
There was, because when we did our, I thought when we did our operating, that there was money still in there. It wasn't a capital, it was an operating, right? I think we just need some, a little bit of clarity there. I mean, if it's just a matter of the funds being.
Yeah, so, thank you for the question. So, just to separate the two. So, I will take a look into that ten thousand dollars that's been discussed here at the table, whether or not that's part of the allocation towards the committee for their activities. The mentioning, of course, for the allocated funds and stay within the parameters set by council would be for the community grant program. So, that's where that is, if this committee takes on the community grant program assessment and recommendations and provide that to council, they would stay within the allocation of the community grant program deliverables, of course.
And how much money is in the community grant program?
What you just heard in the previous.
Yeah, so that doesn't, yeah.
Plus.
It's nothing, and I don't see this fitting with the community grant program at all, as this is being a separate budget item.
Yes, and it's supposed to be read as such, so the community. So the community grant program, separate from the $10,000 that I will take a look into, if that's been allocated to the committee for their work or not.
Counselor McGee?
The, I, I, my sense is the worry is that as a sustainability committee, we want to be somewhat nimble, right? And we want to get some things done and kind of convolute it and finally comes back to council to decide on something and, well, we missed the opportunity. It's gone, we're done, right? So you need to be able to be flexible and nimble and like lanterns on the pond. In my view, that should just be done. We don't have to come back and have that discussion. And as an advisory council, to Counselor Gomana's point of view, is that that's not what it says. It says you are advised and eventually it's going to come to the table here for us to make a decision or the CEO makes the decision. And so I think we just have to be careful and I think everybody's saying the same thing. Just be careful to be, allow the committees to get some work done and, and quite frankly, make decisions that have, gives that sense of I'm useful. You have to be careful. So I agree.
Yep, exactly. I think we're all saying the same thing, but in a different language. So I am hoping you kind of get the gist of it, sort of kind of what we're saying. Like I said, we will be reviewing this here in the next coming months, but will give us an opportunity, I think, you know, to, to change this as well as other terms of references. But I'm happy with just today maybe doing that change and approving it as so we can get, go and get a committee or get a meeting set date and then start kind of progressing that so we can work towards some of these events. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just one other thought. Of all the committees that, that we have, this one perhaps fits best with some Indigenous Métis First Nations content as well, I think. I'm wondering if we have some sort of composition, you know, within the composition and committee membership there that we maybe try to include an Indigenous group or person or?
Yeah, we can include that. We actually did reach out to a few people then when we were kind of looking for community represented, representation on the committee. So we'll definitely have to reach out, touch base again.
And just to add to that, we at the Shangri-La, government has put forward some discussion papers saying that we would like your board to have representatives from legal, county. So what the, what the government, provincial government's trying to do is to suggest that we need to upgrade the board and upgrade the level of board members. And so it's suggesting that here a little bit, which though, I would tell you that 95% of the smaller urban areas came back saying, what are you talking about? We can't get people to join, let alone, I gotta go get a lawyer, too busy for this stuff. You gotta add value, right? So it's, the government has a great suggestion, but it doesn't work in rural Alberta. Sense is that, thank goodness, somebody put their name forward and away you go, right? And I think from the county's point of view, it's the same thing, is we just wait for somebody to put their name there, away you go. We're not gonna go, ah, no, not you. You just don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So again, caution, right?
Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion with, I guess the motion would be considering the amendments? What did you, do you want to repeat, Hans, what was captured, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the amendment would be to have the three representatives from the community to have experience and knowledge of quality of life as the mandate of the Sustainability Committee.
Hey, sorry, what are you reading, Bill? Under reporting structure, okay, yeah. I would say wipe that completely out, yeah.
Thank you for the chair, that's clear, thank you.
Hey, I think we have the two, the two amendments that we'd like to see. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion, those amendments? Counselor Ballas, would you be willing to make that? Oh, can you, can you put your mic on, please, so everyone can hear how excited you are to move this?
I move that we accept the terms of reference for the sustainable, sustainability committee as presented with the amendments.
Is that as amended? Thank you very much. Is there any comment, question or debate on the emotion? Did I say motion or emotion? On the emotion, on the motion. None? Okay, there is motion on the table. I'll ask all in favor. Okay, that is carried. Thank you very much for that and we look forward to the discussion coming again in the fall. Yeah, if we could maybe have a recommendation to, for a planning meeting, then it's September prior to our organizational for this one and then probably all the terms of references to have those discussions.
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Any papers here? Okay, so now we are moving on to 8.7, the CTC classroom lease. Ms. Stone, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
All right, so our CETC classroom lease, so since March 1st of this year, Lindsay Bardol has had a month-to-month lease at the CTC for room 114 for the purposes of homeschooling. She has been receiving that room at a cost of $100 plus GST per month. That is a 73% discount on our rate. So for any member of council that may not be aware, our classroom space is available for long-term lease with a cost based on $12 a square foot. My understanding is that a couple of years ago, the administration at that time had brought somebody in to give like a fair estimate of what commercial space was going for at that time and $12 a square foot is what was landed on. So from there, that's what we have been leasing out our classroom space for long-term. We do also have like day rates and hourly rates and things like that, but for the purposes of what Ms. Bardol was doing, long-term made more sense. So in early July, so just after the, the long weekend, I had reached out to Ms. Bardol and advised that I would be increasing the, the rate to our, our regular rate, which would be 365 plus GST per month, beginning September. I wanted to ensure that she had sufficient time to consider that and make any changes as necessary. So as part of our leases with our other tenants, part of our, the town's obligations at the CTC is to provide the operational costs, so like our utilities, electricity, water, gas, heating, air conditioning, the janitorial services, of course, general maintenance, waste removal, those kinds of things. So ensuring that we're bringing in enough revenue from our tenants, make sure that we can, can cover those costs. And with all those costs rising, it, it's becoming important. So the purpose of me doing that was to make sure that everybody is being treated fairly. And so as part of your agenda package, Ms. Bardol has also provided a letter for council's consideration about the services that she provides and the impact that the increase in rate will have to her operations. So this is being presented for council's consideration today.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. So the, the space has, they've used for the last year, I believe, right? And, and it's used for homeschooling.
So they've, their month-to-month lease that I have right here, it became effective March 1st. I believe that they were previously renting space at the Omniplex and I think that that started around September or in the fall, from what I'm kind of piecing together. So, but she's only, from my understanding, been at the CTC since early March.
Since March.
That's what her lease is anyway.
Okay. Yeah, in, in my mind, you know, it's, it's a community group which helping children to educate and, and I, I think they are operating as a nonprofit organization. So there's no net benefit to the organizers of, of that. Yes, there may be for the, for the teachers who is doing the, the courses, but not to the homeschooling group itself. So again, you know, depending on the availability of, of the classrooms, if, if they're fully booked, I understand that, you know, we don't, we need to give priority to them. But if, if that's not the case, if the, the classrooms are available, then I think we need to look into this favorably and, and see how we can help as well, right? So that's, that's where I will be coming from. But I totally understand, you know, your perspective as well.
Thank you for that.
Is there any other questions? Counselor McGee?
So I'm, I'm renting space for 100 bucks. I have in the neighborhood of 191 families, 500 children. I don't quite get what's happening. It's, I don't have 500 children in the classroom because there's not enough room, but over time, every day we have children that come in to the classroom for Easter egg dying or whatever they're, they're going to do. It's, I, I just don't quite get what, how that all works. And when I think about it, I, I think, all right, so if I'm homeschooling, I'm homeschooling because I'm just not happy with the system downtown. Then what is it that we're, that we're trying to do around that? Is that just another school system? And we're trying to help that out and I, and I, I think that's, that's admirable, but I just don't understand what we're, what we're doing right now is what, who happens to come to the classroom? I don't know. I don't know how it works.
I'm not too sure how she is structuring this from what I see on a day-to-day basis. Ms. Bardol brings in about two school-aged children and, and an infant, because obviously that's what she, you know, makes sense. It is rare that I would see more than that. Like maybe once or twice since March, I have seen more children come in. They did have like a larger event and they rented out the event space for an afternoon. But on a regular day-to-day basis, I'm seeing two, maybe three children. So I believe she's providing, in her letter, she said that she's providing support to the 191 families in our area. But how she's doing that, I'm not too sure because I'm, I'm not seeing that many children in, on a daily basis. So I don't know if there's, she's doing that online, if there's other supports that she's getting, I'm not sure.
Deputy Mayor Ballas?
Thank you. There's the alternative, public education is free. And if somebody wants to operate a homeschooling, then I think it's only fair that we have established rates. It is not a nonprofit. It is a for-profit business, I would assume. And if it's not feasible, then I guess, don't do it. However, I, I am in favor totally of charging the regular rate. If there's alternatives, if she wants to apply for a grant in that community grant for rental assistance, maybe that's available.
Are we all day at the school?
She is about 8:30 till 11:30 noon.
So we have a suggestion that was raised by Counselor Ballas for nonprofits to use the Kerningring Lounge free. Is that an op, is, is that an option?
That's where she was previously. My understanding was that she required dedicated space. So there seemed to be some confusion about, you know, she's there for the morning to do her operations and then, you know, other users would have the ability to occupy that space at other times. And I believe there was perhaps a misunderstanding or maybe that just didn't suit her needs. And then she came over to the CTC to have dedicated space.
I think the space at the Omniplex is for not-for-profit organizations as well, right?
Ms. Bardol has confirmed to me that she is not a non-for-profit. She pays for the space at the CTC out of her own pocket and my understanding is that she does not pass that cost on to any of the other families that she is supporting.
Counselor Gomana, did you have another question?
No, I'm trying to understand the, the, again, the setup and, and get more information, right? So as well as I understand, if, if Ms. Bardol is footing the cost and there's no benefit to her in return, so it's less than nonprofit then, it's, she's losing profit.
Sorry, it's, she's not a registered nonprofit organization.
So, no, I, when I mentioned that nonprofit in the sense of they are not making profit.
That's correct.
So that, that's where I was coming from. But my question would be during that time of these classes, what are we utilizing the space for right now? Is, is that being utilized now or is it not? If it is not, then is there a negotiation that we can do with, with this group, right? In the end, it, it goes down to utilizing that space. And if, if there's way that we can utilize the space as well as help a, help a group in our community, I'm all for that.
So as of right now, there, I don't have a waiting list for that, for that room. It is completely council's prerogative if they would like to enter negotiations for a different rate. I'm just not comfortable doing that when council sets the fees.
Deputy Mayor Ballas?
That basically was my question, whether that room was totally dedicated to, to, to her only.
It is, yeah.
And if that's the case, then the rate applies.
Yeah, I think that it's fantastic that we have many education opportunities and initiatives within the community. I do however, think it's important that we're consistent with our rates when we're looking at the users at the building there. How do we say to one teacher or the other, you get a discount and the next that you don't, right? I know that we have a business plan in place and that we're trying to create a rural education consortium model. And if we're not charging a rate to the users and the institutes and individuals that are using it, then we're not going to have a center that will be available for education. So I think that it's important that we do stay consistent and charge the rate that is there. I know that there are small school fees that when you go to school already, and if you were to look at Mrs. Bardol's letter and she talks about 500 students and she could be charging $7 roughly per student a month and it would still be less than what the public schools are, you're paying for school fees. So I think that how she sets up her structure and her business plan is completely up to her. It's not up to us to, to determine if she charges or she doesn't. There is the option of homeschool being out of your home or, you know, possibly finding a church or something else. But I think that for me, it's very important that we stay consistent with our rates. And I think that if we don't, then our doors aren't going to be open as well. So I think it's an opportunity for individuals. We want to make sure that we're working with groups, we're offering our classrooms and things like that. But I think so, when our rates are set, our rates are set. We have a zero fee initiative, tuition initiative program that supports post-secondary education and that's a lot that we're doing for our community. So if we continue to do that for everything, then we won't have that zero fee. So we're just kind of taking away from one for the other. So I'm in favor of leaving the fees, that's where they're at. Are there any other comments or questions?
Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? These are the top, the tough ones, but we have to do it. Counselor McGee?
Madam Mayor, uh, I would make a motion that council approve the lease rate of three hundred and sixty-five dollars, plus G S T a month for Room One Fourteen at the Clean Energy Technology Center, uh, which reflects the, um, twelve hundred dollars square feet, uh, that
Thank you very much for that. There is a motion on the table. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? None, then I will ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much, council.
We are going to move on to eight point eight engineering assessment for Park Valley Pool. I'll let you make the motion here if there's one needed, Rick. You'll get your opportunity. You're welcome, I'll be looking this way. Got to get your hand up first. Well, he was kind of, oh, his head a little bit hesitant, he was, I didn't see anybody else. Everybody's always waiting for somebody else to do it, but you beat him. Next time I'll make sure I just. I'm looking this way. So this is the addition that we have added to the agenda. Thanks. Hans, you were presenting this for us this afternoon, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and through to the chair, to the rest of council as well. So this topic is on the agenda, uh, based on the fact that we had conversations, uh, in the recent past, of course, about the Pine, Pine Valley, I would say, Park Valley Pool. Um, and the opening of the, uh, new, uh, Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center. Uh, with that, of course, we take a look at the functionality and the closure of the Park Valley Pool for swimming. With that discussion, um, there's multiple factors into that, of course. When you go through a process, uh, of decision-making that we will see involved, uh, in upcoming months. The most important thing is that we will have work activities happening with the, uh, taking the pool offline, so to speak, when the swimming will stop to, uh, exist over there, let's say in the middle of October, but still is the planning. We have to make sure that the pool is in the function, that it can stay as a building safe, uh, still, uh, let's say, preserved for us. In the meantime, and, uh, the process will happen of determining what to do with the old building. The engineering that has to do with it is pretty specific, taking a look into, uh, keeping the water in or taking the water out. Uh, maybe even over the winter time, of course, it has certain consequences. The other aspect that the engineering should take a look at is the life expectancy of the total building envelope. That means the building itself, the roof, the H V A construction, uh, everything that has to do with the, uh, uh, basically the integrity of the building itself has to be assessed in order to make sure that we can, uh, really come up with what is the, uh, potential for keeping this building for other functionalities in the future, long-term, uh, maybe even midterm. But for sure, related to the other usage that can happen in there. Uh, that is a broad, uh, basically, uh, a broad, uh, spectrum of usage. And the engineering has to take that into consideration as well. In the discussions leading up to this, uh, report, we also took a look at the, uh, let's say, the neighboring, uh, location. We have the Scout Hall in that area as well, which is a town-owned building. And it would be smart to basically integrate that in that, uh, report when we get a specific engineering out there as well at the same time. Looking into this and the timeline on it, uh, of course, it has to do with dollar amounts. So that's why you see, uh, the estimated cost would be between five and ten grand, uh, to include the Scout Hall in there. It will be closer to that ten thousand dollars, of course. The other thing is the timeline. So we have to make sure that this, uh, report is, uh, now discussed, basically, uh, hopefully come up to a decision. So we can have this, uh, engineering done as soon as possible to make sure we can come in, uh, let's say, September with certain recommendations towards the process back to council. Just the planning of the process for, uh, decisions on the future use is depending on, of course, the engineering, uh, recommendations. So in front of you, you have the recommendation first that, uh, council approve to retain engineering assessment services related to the Park Valley Pool and Scout Hall buildings as presented for up to ten thousand dollars funded from the operating, operational reserve. And with that, entertain questions.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, Board Administration? Administration, Deputy Mayor Ballas, it's like a big. Ask your question.
Thank you. Another question, I'm just going to make a statement and then I'm going to make the motion. Uh, basically, until we do get this assessment, we're not going to be able to determine the use of that building. Uh, so the sooner we get it done, the better off we are. And in that regards, I'm going to make a motion that council approve to retain engineering assessment services related to Park Valley Pool and Scout Hall Building as presented for up to ten thousand dollars from, funded from the operational reserve.
Thank you very much for the motion. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? Dip, or Counselor McGee? It's like a tongue twister today.
Do you, do you R F P that? Uh, uh, you, you talking about engineering assessment, that's, that's anybody out there? So are you looking at somebody in particular or you're R F P?
Uh, the procurement requirements would, uh, for that amount would be just to get three quotations.
Okay.
And do we feel that the ten thousand would be sufficient for? Yeah, within the ballpark? Okay, any other questions? No, okay, there's a motion on the table and I'll ask all in favor. You didn't even get a chance, Rick, that was just Rick or Bill just didn't even, I know. Supposed to be, supposed to be Rick's turn and you just had to jump right in there. Well, you know what? There's still, there's still an opportunity to make a motion at the end. You can accept the items as information, so it's not over yet. Yeah. Okay, so we are done with our decision items. Um, is everybody okay? Does anybody need a break? Let's keep going, okay, we're going to keep going. We're going to move right into our department reports, nine point one, Planning Department Report. That is you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, the first thing I want to do is bring our new, uh, development planner down and introduce him to council. Mr. Derek Connors.
Good afternoon, welcome. And where, where do you come from? Over from Edmonton. Well, welcome aboard, we're very excited to, to have you here. Of course he went to school. Oh, wow, good for you, good for you.
I would agree, good for you. Well, thank you very much and it's very exciting that we'll be, um, working on our M D P a lot in-house. It'll save us some dollars and give you a great experience and give you an opportunity to get to know the community and, and what our future here looks like. So welcome aboard and we're excited to have you.
Okay, yes, I'm very excited as well. Um, last week participated in the National Planning Conference held in Whistler online. There's some good, uh, stuff, good topics. Uh, we're, we're reviewing the county's draft airport, uh, district regulations with, with the airport. I'm going to try and, uh, meet with the county over the next week or two. Um, we're, we're actually preparing the registration documents for the utility right away to service Deer Meadows. And, uh, Ms. Stone will also be handing out, uh, a list in her update on, uh, new businesses in June. Uh, we dealt with the manufactured homes first reading this morning and, uh, we're also doing a request for quotes for a survey plan for the airport.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Mr. White? Counselor McGee?
Who's the county representative that you would meet with?
Uh, uh, through to Counselor McGee, Kathleen Sterling.
And, um, where is Deer Meadows with their development? Are they starting excavation or planning this year?
Yeah, through, through your worship, uh, I haven't heard back from them since, uh, we agreed on, uh, a path forward with the utility. And so, uh, yeah, the last I heard, they were in Belize doing something. And so, in any case, we'll have the servicing ready when they're ready to move.
Sounds great, any other questions? No, well, thank you very much for that. We'll move on to nine point two, Municipal Services Department Report.
Uh, your worship, uh, there won't be a report for Municipal Services.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I just want to have an update, do you have anything on the beautification process? I know that some of the things were starting to happen. Do you know what's kind of in progress right now or what's happening?
I don't know, I, your worship, sorry, I, I'm not really up to speed on that one.
Okay, I know I had a conversation with Rob in regards to, he felt that we had missed picnic tables when we talked about beautification. So he, I think, was going to be bringing that back because he thought we might be taking something off. And I said, no, I don't think we'll be taking anything off, I think we'll still be moving forward. So there might be, um, he might be bringing it up at our next planning meeting of, um, the picnic tables and where those will be going as well. Um, so maybe if we have, we can just kind of have an update too the next time of what's kind of happening in and around the community with that. Um, and we'll move on to nine point three, Community Services and F C S S.
Thank you, Mayor. And so basically, I do have a list of an update and it was not part of your, your report. So I'll try to speak slowly, but, uh, just to not stumble over my own words, that's basically it. Um, now for the, uh, E C D C, our Early Childhood Development Center, uh, things are of course, uh, rolled into the summer. But, uh, the big thing that's, they are still working on is grants. And they are, keep being successful in, uh, basically getting grants from our local and, uh, more, uh, let's say broader businesses. So, um, Tambina and, uh, Wayar House have both contributed, uh, big time again, uh, for our center and our childcare. Um, for the activities, uh, in the Drayton Valley and District, F C S S homeless and poverty reduction. So they're working hard doing fun stuff as well. So it's a skateboard jam that happens August ninth, so keep that in mind and, uh, come on and see what's happening over there. August fifteen to September twelve, uh, we are accepting grant applications, uh, for projects to take place during the remainder of twenty twenty-two. So everybody's invited to see if that's something that, uh, can be applied for. We're currently working and updating the Drayton Valley and District F C S S Community Resource Directory that will come out in the fall. Um, maybe most people have seen already that the C T V Edmonton came by for the shelter pods. And, uh, they did a nice, um, yeah, let's say broadcast on it. And it surely helped with getting the word out to the community and, um, getting people, uh, utilizing our shelter pods. We have, uh, certain nights, um, let's say seven or eight people in, uh, with nine guests already, uh, as the maximum, uh, per night. The Omniplex, uh, Center Straight Blast Gym will be hosting its first ever, uh, that provincial, uh, Jiu-Jitsu Tournament. So that's what was already discussed during grant funding, September twenty-four, twenty-five. The dirt is out of Omni One, so we're getting ready for, uh, of course, cleaning up to make ice already. And nobody thinks about that yet, but, uh, August will be, uh, building our ice sheet already in there. The Park Valley Pool, um, over there, we had the award coming towards us from, uh, and we call that the Dr. William Bill Patton First Aid Award. So that means we, uh, had the most accumulated high number in, uh, providing first aid programs, uh, serving communities from, uh, less than seven and a half thousand people. So that's great. Summer lessons are really underway. We are hiring still, of course, uh, new lifeguards and working hard on the program to make sure we have enough for our new pool. Um, activities that are happening, uh, basically, uh, every week, we try to do special, special activities. So come and check it out. Um, the Splash Park is very busy, so that controller is in that worked. But I have to, um, say that we need to shut down for one twenty-four hour, a full day. We tried that in the morning, it didn't work out, the patchwork didn't, uh, cure that fast. So we took it out, it was a busy day with, uh, high temperatures, so people were really anxious. Uh, we will communicate with which day that will be, uh, but we have to do it to make sure that we don't deteriorate the, uh, surface way more. Uh, Community Services, so urban housing units are filling quickly with our, uh, new, uh, worker in that area that helps out. And we see, let's say, the, yeah, the benefits that it has to really work with people. Uh, we had one single mother that, uh, was our tenant and, and now moved out to other opportunities that she has. And without the program that we basically served her in the beginning, it would never be, that she wouldn't be back on her feet. So those are emotional moments that we can help people, uh, in that sense. Uh, the R D N, uh, Enabling Housing Choice Project, uh, was not awarded to us, but the organization wants to work with us and see if they can help out finding other grant funding to still be a service of us. This was a very competitive grant process and, uh, we were not successful, but hopefully we can do something else in that area as well. So basically, uh, last thing for recreation, uh, we did get the task and we wanted to do it ourselves as well to really inventory what we have in the community. There's a lot happening, even new initiatives like, uh, creating a outdoor volleyball, beach volleyball field with our Parks Department, uh, together. So we are inventorying what we have, where it's located, how well it's being used to make sure that we plan right for the future. And that's my update for now.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions? Counselor McGee?
Um, first question, um, have, have we found a consultant for the economic development workshops?
If I can pass it on to my colleague.
Sure, we can wait till.
Wait till later, okay.
We'll wait till, um.
What, so when you, I'll ask that question then, okay. Um, E C D C is closed for the summer or do they do, uh, summer programs there?
Thank you for that question. They do have summer programs over there, but yes, they are, of course, a lot of vacation time taken. But so we wind down a little bit, but there is still programming.
Okay. The doorbell for the, uh, shelter pods seem not to be working last Thursday, is that repaired or?
Thank you for that question. Yes, has been prepared. Uh, it does give us, uh, let's say, a little bit of challenges. So every day we communicate with, uh, the service providers, but, uh, it's working. And we do have our, uh, yeah, homeless, uh, population utilizing it and able to get in.
And so you suggested we have nine, we have opportunity for nine guests and we're, we're generally full at the, at this time?
So at the moment, we have opportunity, of course, for twelve units, twelve pods. There can be double occupancy. Uh, nine is, has been our maximum at this moment, so we can accommodate that. Uh, even a little bit more is no problem.
Fantastic to hear.
I, I sent a note, uh, on that same Thursday when I was at the shelter pods about, um, we have a resident, uh, that lives just above where the washroom is. And wondered, she wondered if you, we could move the washroom to the northeast corner away from her residence. And not that it was a particular problem that day, but as things begin to heat up, gosh knows, right? So I, I don't know if that got to you then. Or you may, I see it's not moved, I just thought maybe there's a problem.
So thank you for that and I'll inquire further. No, I did not have that notice, so we'll look into it, thank you.
Oh, so like, uh, an adjacent resident is.
Yeah, right above, in that, uh, she has an apartment right above, right above the, right above the toilet.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The porta potty.
Okay, right at the glance there. Okay, um, I did have a couple of questions as well. Um, when you talked about the. When you talked about the Splash Park, is there an opportunity to kind of set that up during the week when it's cloudy or cooler? Like what's the temp, what does the temperature have to be at in order to repair that?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. So, yeah, we'll take a look into the weather, of course, and take a day that's, we anticipate at least it's a little bit less hot. But at least it has to be over 15 degrees for sure. And the night temperature should not be dipping too low for that either. So anything of the upcoming weeks is nice. But then again, when it's nice, the people want to be there too.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, I don't frequent there a lot. I don't know if there's a day that's like a Monday or a Tuesday that's less busy or, you know, I'm sure you guys probably know that a little bit better. You spoke about that we weren't successful for the grant. When it comes to our MAT program funding that we apply for, wait for every year, and then we don't know till the last minute, do you know anything about the MAT program funding? Have we applied for it? Can we still get it and apply it to the shelter pods? Where are we at in that process?
So I know that Lola is, of course, working on that still as well to ensure that we have continuous funding. But let's say with the change of the MAT program itself, of course, the parameters change a little bit to what we are doing right now. But yes, we are still looking into similar funding for this continuous initiative.
Perfect. And if you could kind of, I guess, keep us in the loop sooner than later because we don't want to wait until October, November, you know, again, or something. I know we have like the pods, which will be heated a little bit different, but it'd be nice to have the funding in place. And we have talked about this with our MLA as well, knowing this ahead of time. So if we need to be advocating and having those conversations with the province, then if we could be having them a little bit earlier would be great. Or whatever help you need, then just kind of let us know. And then you spoke about recreation opportunities. I think it was a fantastic idea to hear that, the beach volleyball. It took me a minute to figure out which park that was because I think our, our previous mayor called it Ducky Park. So I was thinking Sunrise was Sunrise, like where the walkway is. I couldn't find it. I had to drive around. Then when I seen it, I was like, okay, this is Sunrise Park. I think it's great. Other recreation opportunities, I think it's important. We did talk about, you know, what we're using for the curling rink and how we can be increasing revenue and things like that and ideas. Do you know a time that, that report will be coming back to council or there'll be discussions of what are the potentials for increased recreation or opportunities?
Thank you for that question. So we are working in the department, let's say, over the summer because we know the projects that we want to bring forward as administration are going to be discussed almost ahead of when the process, of course, of budgeting comes to council. So we know we have to do that in the summer right now to make sure that we have projects lined up in September, talking about it internally to make sure it comes to council at the right moment.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. And then last question is, I did forward you a couple emails and some of the times when we have these emails, I'm not sure if they're legit or they're, if they are or they're not. I do see some are going to be renting some of our facilities. Do you know much about, like there was that, the Baby Go, and then there was that childcare email that I also forwarded to you. Do you know much about either one of those or?
Yeah, so I'm in the awesome position that I can ask my staff, of course, for any information. So I push those through most of the time to my staff. One, I know that came back to you already with some answers on it. But yeah, so we know a lot of initiatives that happen or sideways. We are aware of items. So we provide the information back to you as, as we can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, maybe I'll bring it up with our in-council standing items as upcoming meetings and see if anybody knows or has any information more on that. And that is it for me. Councilor Kamana, did you have some questions?
Yes, please. Thank you. The, the old pool, Hans, you know, what's the status of that? Is it still fully functional or there's some parts that's not working?
The old swimming pool?
Yeah.
So thank you, Councilor Kamana, and through the chair to you. So at the moment, the old pool, of course, we know with the age, the things that we are struggling with will show. The hot tub has been down for a while, waiting for parts to make sure that it's up and functioning again. So yes, it's still functional. Staff is working hard behind the scenes with the maintenance department to make sure things are in working order. But it's not always that easy, but it's still safe and operational.
Okay, so I guess that was kind of what I was thinking about the hot tub, right? So we have parts coming in and then we are, we are thinking of going to the new facility as well. So, you know, when, when would that be fixed or if we need to fix it at all? That's kind of a discussion I think we need to have at some point.
Yeah, thank you. And what's in our, let's say, capacity and operational, we will continue doing that. When there would be something that's really a, let's say, a capital item, a big undertaking that could come back to council with a certain recommendation, but so far we are able to do it still within the operational.
Thank you very much for your report. Oh, sorry, Councilor Clark, do you have a question?
And maybe I missed it. I don't know if you talked about, but staffing the new pool, are we, how are we making out with hiring folks for that?
Thank you for that question, Councilor Clark, and through you, the chair to all of council. So it's going well. We are through one round of our training again. And training means that we are able to train our new staff members ourselves. We have a good training program with the Livesave Society in-house. With our new pool manager hired and starting in the beginning of August, of course, we'll have the opportunity to make sure that we have enough staff. We are doing a current round still in the summertime of training through the Livesave Society program for new pool guards. It's going to be an interesting journey, of course, to fill on time, especially to do that so that everybody can be trained up in the new facility as well. But we're hopeful that we have enough staff at that moment. And we see that, let's say, vibe in the community as well. I know there are young people in the community that have waited for this opportunity to become lifeguard. So jumping on board is still happening.
I have a daughter today taking first aid and she's taking her bronze medallion this weekend and entwistle, all excited. Okay, well, thank you very much. If there's no other, no other questions, doesn't seem like. So we will move on to 9.4. Is there a report from Protective and Emergency Services?
No, your worship.
Okay. And what about 9.5 Corporate Services and Finance?
No, again, she's on vacation.
Okay, perfect. So then that leaves Ms. Stone. I assume you're doing both Growth Services Report and Communications Department. I'm always looking for Economic Development. That's what I was, when I was looking earlier, I was like, we keep changing the names. We need to change that. And I'm still getting used to Municipal Services. I'm looking for Public Works. Oh, so this is 2021, right? And then the other side, oh, okay, it's 2022.
Good afternoon again, council. So for anybody watching online, I've just handed out council the, the list of businesses and new business licenses that we have in Drayton Valley. We continue to see pretty regular new businesses popping up. And I think that's keeping Ken's team real busy. And of course, Marie Lynn is continuing with her business visitations. So Marie Lynn and Deputy Mayor Ballas were at the Smoothie Bar. And it was the What's Up?
Was that?
Yeah, it looked pretty cool. I was sad that I couldn't be there for it, but it looks really good. And we gave them our iconic pulling together plaque. So also with our business visitation plan, Marie Lynn is partnering with the U of A, specifically Jill. I believe she was here for presentations. And Brooks Hanawich, he was the one that did our strategic planning session with the Education Committee. And they're going to start next week. They're going to be going around to some of the businesses and gathering some information regarding the education needs from industry. So I'm really excited to, to see that coming together and that get underway. The Economic Development Committee, so our next steps, as council's aware, we are having our strategic planning sessions. They are booked for August 8th and 9th. We have a session with the committee and we also have multiple sessions for the public. We have started advertising. Marie Lynn also has a bunch of cards that she's been handing out when she goes out and about. So we're expecting a pretty good turnout for that. For our education piece, for the education workshop that we had a bit ago, Tanya is expecting to have the, she's working with Brooks on this as well. They are expecting to have a draft completed this week. And there is a committee meeting scheduled for, I believe, the 28th to, to review that. And then we'll be coming to council in, in the future to review that information. And the U of A research team is working with a consultant on designing a social return on investment analysis on the zero fee tuition program. So that work is still underway. And the healthcare aid students have completed the first of two clinical placement experiences as part of their certification program. So things are still underway with this, even though it is summer. And our energy programs, again, I'm not going to touch on too much because Isha was here this morning and provided a, a pretty lengthy update on what she's working on. And of course, one of the big things that she'll be doing now is submitting our PCP milestone four for FCM. And I believe she spoke about this at the last council meeting, submitting our entry for the Alberta Municipalities Award for our food cycler program. So if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Ms. Stone? So I have one for the University of Alberta. Do you know anything about their grants? I know that their two-year research project grant is going to be coming to a halt here at the end of the year. And they were going to be applying for additional grants. Have you heard anything about that?
Nothing further.
Nothing further yet? Okay. Just if you can kind of make a note of that and let us know. I know that there was a couple that they were looking into. So it'd be nice if they had the opportunity to be successful in, in those as well. Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. I see on the social media that we are still advertising for the Olds College Business Administration Program and all that. Just wondering how the enrollment's going and, you know, how close we are.
Oh, enrollment for the program itself?
Right.
It's going well. They've been a little bit cagey with the numbers for us, but as far as I'm aware, I keep checking with Tanya, it's still very much a go.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good to hear. And then you also met with Eric Burton to discuss the Canadian Community Economic Development Network. What's kind of progressing out of that?
Marie Lynn is still in discussions with him. I believe there might have been some email correspondence with, with you guys in council. So I think she had touched base just to kind of get an understanding of the work that he had done previously with the town and what maybe some next steps would be there. So I know that they were kind of looking into this additional work. So I can ask her further. So this report was done a couple of weeks ago to hit the deadline. So there could have been more.
Okay, great. And then we did have an opportunity to tour BCG yesterday. So it was nice to have Marie Lynn come along and get to meet everybody. We did, I think she exchanged kind of contacts there with, it was Troy and Kristen. Is that her name? Was the other, I think it was Kristen? I think it was Kristen. Just to kind of make sure that we're keeping in the loop, I know that there might be some asks coming forward or some, you know, support and things like that, as well as product support as well, right? So that's going on. And then the one thing that I did ask about is, they do go to trade shows. And one of the things they do go to are RMA and to AUMA or AM now. And I did suggest to them to put in an application for FCM. So Marie Lynn didn't have the information. So I said maybe to reach out to you. And if you could give it to her to forward on so then they could be maybe going to that. Because I know it's important that they're advocating federally and provincially, not just municipally, right? So that would give them a, a really good opportunity to attend that as well.
For sure. Marie Lynn was very excited when she came back from the tour. I haven't been myself, but she was, she was pretty pumped when she came back.
Good. Yeah, she seemed excited. It's nice to have her along, you know, on tours with us.
Yeah, she's such a wealth of knowledge and she's energetic and has all these great ideas. So I'm just so glad that she's been able to go out and, well, now that COVID's over, you can actually go out and see people.
Yeah. And she can, you know, make that connection with the businesses. Excited to hear that partnering with Jill at the U of A to go out and do that as well. That'll be a great little research.
Yeah, just bringing in that education piece.
Yeah. And then for her to also have those discussions. Another discussion came up. We talked earlier a little bit about, I think Rick had suggested putting in a, putting out an RFP or RFQ, I can't remember for the land that's adjacent to BCG.
Right.
And so I was kind of talking a little bit with Brenda and Marie Lynn, saying that the county has a lot of that information already and a lot of legwork because you need somebody to hold a license and to have some knowledge and experience. And I know that it started with Wanda and now has kind of trickled down to Sandra. And they have a lot that they've worked on there. So it was just suggested by Brenda that we continue that relationship and kind of, you know, maybe see if there's an opportunity to collaborate together to, you know, for that. I know that, that there's been, you know, when we're looking especially at our farmers, right? We don't have a lot of farmers here. So if we're looking at a pilot program or the potential for farmers or getting them involved in the hemp, that we need to make sure that we're kind of all at the same table and getting the support and, you know, who could hold that license and would all be involved, right?
Right. Yeah, I think it's, it's a bit of a process.
Yeah. And just for lastly too, I was, yeah, I wish I could have went to the What's Up Sport, Culture and Nutrition.
It looks like you missed out.
Yeah, Business to See What That's All About. I did ask for pictures. I haven't seen any yet, Bill, from the, it's on Facebook? Oh, okay. I didn't look on Facebook. Oh, it is. Okay. Oh, I wanted to post it. So maybe I'll just share it and have a peek there. Thank you for going. And yeah, excited to be going out and visiting some of the businesses. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Sure, go ahead, Councilor McGee.
Just as an alert, I don't have Facebook. So if anybody sees something that...
Maybe share the pictures.
You think you should alert me to, then let me know.
Marie Lynn took the pictures and sent them to me and then I posted them.
Okay.
So, but I have two questions. One, I asked earlier about whether or not we've, we've nailed down a consultant to, for economic development. And the, but first of all, I was going to say that we just got notice that they need some volunteers for the garden party tomorrow. Coming, that came from the library, sort of circuitously, they were asking. I'm obviously a patron and that's where I got that. So, so just so you know, council, that if you feel like quarantine or whatever you get to do, you could, it'd be very helpful. And to the point on the economic development.
The consultant.
Consultant.
Yes, Marie Lynn and Rob have been, I can't remember his last name, but he's going to be coming in to facilitate and, and working through this strategic planning session with us.
Maybe like that's starting August 7th?
8th.
8th?
Not the weekend.
Okay.
I can shoot you his name and company if that's helpful to council.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Just so we can prepare. And if there's any preparation work, let us know too, right?
Will do.
Because I did have this sort of thing in my mind, thinking, okay, now what are you going to do when you arrive at the meeting? So...
I need this from you.
Mm-hmm. That's right. Come fully engaged.
And that's it for me.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to 9.7 Communications.
All right. Thank you, council. So just a lot of ongoing stuff at this point. We were like really busy at the, into June and a lot of that stuff is still ongoing. The hydrant flushing, our water disconnection education piece, still advertising for the, well, I guess today was the last day for the mayor's gala, the nominations. We were advertising that everywhere that we could. And we are advertising, of course, the Garden Party Mixer, which is tomorrow, and our Economic Development Strategic Planning Sessions on the 8th and 9th. And we're continuing to advertise for the BA program through Olds. And like Mr. Van Cleveren said, we are, we had some information come out from, was it CBC, Hans? On the shelter pods? Whatever. So that's been out and it's been getting, people are very interested about it. So we've been trying to keep an eye on that and make sure that the public are well informed about what they are and why they're important in our community. And some people may not agree, but the right information is, we're trying to get that out there. And we're advertising for our tip program for the finance team. And of course, our other stuff that, that are just kind of happening every once in a while, the utility tie-ins at the new, the new school are underway. And so we're making sure that that information is getting out to the public. And of course, just our regular town page, radio advertisement, social media management and website updates. If there's any comments.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions? Nope, that is it. Thank you very much. Okay. And then we've already addressed 9.8 earlier today and we'll move on to our council reports. Councilor McGee?
Thank you, your worship. I think the, the only thing that I might mention is that the town looks great. I did go out yesterday morning to the Splash Park, Hans, and I tried to figure out what the problem is because it's, I think Bill did a great job, but I couldn't see where the, where the water might be running into underneath there or something. That seems to be the problem. But so I did that walk through. And the other thing is BCG. I thought it was a great tour. If you think we hew the wood and we pump the oil and when you look at manufacturing, it's, it's truly amazing. You can do that sort of thing, that you, you know, the products that they make. And if you could have more of that...
that they make and if you could have more of that, because that's 30 people and then if they do another shift, that's another 30 people, another shift, another 30 people, just in that shop alone, right? So manufacturing is really a key to where we need to get to. I think it was, I was really impressed and thankful that I was there with them. That's my report.
Thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor Ballas?
Thank you. On July 4th, we did a tour of the FCSS, took us around and showed us the programs that they're involved and it was a great tour. On the 6th, we did some agenda setting and did a warehouse or tour. Also reviewed the reside program. On the 7th, we had a community safety meeting and out of there it was reviewed, some items that will be eventually coming probably to council will be the cameras again. The CPO gave stats and then probably looking at the potential for an additional CPO as well. So those things that will be coming eventually. On the 13th, we had the planning meeting, the 14th agenda setting, check signing. I find that such a waste of time, just a waste of time. Because there's things there that nobody's familiar with, the thing's already has been paid, she sends out a register to everybody the next day. You sit there for two hours, two and a half hours questioning things that you know nothing That's why they're getting paid. I don't know why we're doing that. And I think we should really look seriously at reviewing and changing that system. My rant. That evening had the Rotary Community Barbecue on the 18th, Monday morning, the Was Up Super Food Opening and the honor of having the first smoothie, which was very good.
Was it?
Yes, excellent. He makes excellent, very similar to Booster Juice.
Oh, wow.
Very similar, yeah. It was great. I certainly would encourage anybody to go there. It's really healthy foods, really healthy food too. I feel so much better.
Did you arm wrestle anybody too?
No. And then on the 19th, we had the BCG tour, sorry, and also on the 18th, we had that Aquatic Fundraising Committee sponsorship tour. And I think that there was a fantastic turnout there. It was greatly, I was very pleased to see all the people that came out to do a tour and the feedback was pretty positive. In fact, it was very positive. The other thing that I have here is that the Rural Community Conference that's being held here in October want to know if the town and the county are interested in putting an exhibition table. They probably are going to have between 100 and 125 guests from outside the area attending the conference. And it'd be just an opportunity to promote your town if we so chose to. But I think maybe this is something that we should, I don't know, if the chamber wants to do it, if the town wants to do it, if the Economic Development Committee wants to do it.
And what does the group again?
It is, I knew you were going to ask, so that's why.
You forgot.
It's the Rural Community Rural Health Professions Action Plan.
Oh, the RPAP?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think Amila had brought this.
That was two years ago.
That was two years ago, okay, so now this is still, this is coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and Cody's here today from the county, welcome, you can also take this back and say, I have a great idea.
Actually, Carol is preparing a bag from the county, I believe, and I know we already, Sabine already got us stuff for our welcoming bag.
Oh, we've got some swag items, we've.
Yeah, she's already done that, so maybe we could just have a combined booth and collaboration and.
And we'll put a banner that says Recreation.
And hand out the bags and just welcome people to our community, you know, one morning or something.
And what are the dates of that?
October 4th, 5th and 6th, is it not? I'm going by memory. Trying to remember, 4, 5, 6, yeah. Who's coming to visit?
Is it doctors and?
Yeah, it would be health practitioners from different areas. Three days, it's three day, yeah. And they have one night is.
That'll be the day maybe we recruit them.
I'll take your comments back to the committee, sir. They're also planning an evening down at Eagle Park, is that what it's called? Eagle Point, yeah, with a little function there that evening or on a Tuesday night, I believe, whether or not. But I think we should have something, it's something to look at.
So we did have a conversation about doing that before, so what department or how would we kind of coordinate that to get a table or to participate in that?
Well, I think we start with through our communications department and see what we have to do there and, I guess, tap any department we need after that.
Okay, so I believe that, I can't, it's next week or the following week, bring it to the planning meeting and then as a request and then we can determine where. And that is it for your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that and thank you for attending the business on Monday. And yeah, I'm very excited to go and try a smoothie there. Counselor Kamana, your council report?
Thank you. Yeah, first, we had the Canada Day Parade and all that, that was excellent this year. Good to see the crowds and also going back to some normalcy. On the 4th, the FCSS Board Tour, was good to engage with the groups that FCSS support in our community and talk to them as well. 6th, as Counsel Ballas mentioned, Warehouse Tour. 15th, we had the Rotary Barbecue for the community, 550 burgers were given, $422.50 were raised for the food bank, was a very good turnout on a beautiful day. You know, it's a, it's a community getting together to serve the community and it's a fantastic event in my mind. 18th, Ricochet Aquatic Facility Fundraising Committee Event, was good to see how the aquatic facility was coming along. Nice to see that we are getting there and exciting that hopefully we can open that up within the year. 19th, council tour of BCG as Counsel Ballas mentioned as well. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Counsel Clerk?
Yeah, I've been away the last couple of weeks, not a ton to report, but two things. One, Monday morning, bright and early, I was driving around and I guess to echo Tom's comments around how things are looking, I think things are looking a lot better than they were a couple, couple of weeks ago, just in terms of, you know, lawns being cut, grass being tidy, you know, that sort of stuff, so it's good. And then secondly, I think it was yesterday or the day before, Global News had a little thing about somebody sleeping on the floor in the hospital. You know, so, because my point there is, you know, we're having a tough time getting nurses, we're having a tough time, not so much doctors, I don't think, but in general, you know, attracting people to Drayton Valley and when they see, you know, people sleeping on the floor of the hospital, it's like, why the hell would I want to go there? You know, so I think, you know, as a council, we need to be talking to HHS and I think they've reached out to you, right? So, you know, I think we really need to put the pressure on them to get things right here because they're not right, it seems, especially if we're getting, you know, black eyes like that through the, through the news outlets, that's not good for this community, so.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Thank you for that. Counselor Evans?
I'll try not to go over stuff that's already been gone over too much, but let me see, yeah, the community safety meeting, we did discuss the time issues with CPOs, also the homeless camps and that they've been kind of moving them along and where they all are now and what the plan is moving forward possibly. Yeah, I found the FCSS tour was, was very enlightening. Boy, we have a lot of, a lot of impressive people doing a lot of very good things in the community. Yeah, it was a real feel-good day running around there. The warehouse tour was, was very informative. I found, find that stuff very interesting, same with the BCG, that manufacturing stuff very interesting. Good to see we have some smart folks out there doing some innovative things. Yeah, BCG, it's the supply, you know, they have all the tools to, to make all these various different things, but it's just getting the supply of raw, raw materials to them, they could be going gangbusters. And of course, like everybody else, they're seeing those major increases and just trying to move materials and get materials like everybody else. Lastly, I stopped and chatted with a couple of the guys filling potholes the other day, gave them a quick attaboy and they weren't sure if they were winning or not. I think they've just been, they're probably sick of them, but yeah, good work, you know, I can see the difference, yeah, things are, things are coming along, I think, hats off to, to our folks in the field there who are chipping away at it. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, it's definitely been a last couple of weeks of a lot of tours, a lot of kind of moving through the community. We started with the celebration on Canada Day, moving into the FCSS tour, Warehouser Tour and of course, the BCG Tour. I think one of the blessings of being on council is you get to really see how our businesses work, what's happening in the community, see our groups and organizations and all the wonderful people that are behind it and make your town what it is, right? I think that, you know, when you're a resident of the community, you definitely see what's happening, but when you get an opportunity to be behind the scenes, to sit on the boards and have these invitations, it's really, really an eye-opener to see all the amazing people that support our community and do all the amazing things that they do. So that's always a great opportunity. I think that's one of probably the best parts of the job is the engagement and being out there with everybody in the community. We also had an opportunity to have a meeting with a gentleman from the reside program, that was another healthcare conversation that we got to have. We have another one that's coming up next week, Deputy Mayor Ballas will join me on that and hopefully we'll get some answers again to some of the ongoing issues with Alberta Health Services. And I noticed that there's a letter on my desk that needs to be signed again to go out, so that will be signed and they'll be followed with a phone call for the province and hopefully we can start to see some, see some progress. I know I keep saying that and little baby steps, but then I think we go ahead one and then we go back 10 more, it seems like, but hopefully things will be changing in the future. I think that's all we can do is be hopeful, right? I'm hoping things don't get worse, let's just pray for that. But that is the end of my report and we will move into council items, 11.1 Council Initiated Items. I don't see any things on the agenda, if anybody else has any standing items or anything that they want to discuss. Nope, moving into 11.2 Upcoming Meetings and or Conferences. We do have the Metal Next Tour that'll be coming up here, the grand opening and everything ribbon cutting there, I think in about a week. I'll be away again for that and I know that we'll have great representation. There might be an opportunity for a few words being said. Are you available, Bill, to say a few words at the Metal Neck? Is it the 29th? Yeah, 11:00 AM, tour and a barbecue on site there. They're a new company in the community that's created jobs and a little bit of diversity, so it's nice to see that as well. And then also, I know there was an invite to Main Street Law Bar. I did receive a phone call last night from the gentleman, really wishing that I would be attending and unfortunately, I'm unavailable, so I'm not sure if any other members of council will be attending that. I know Marie Lynn is going to be attending, so there will be town representation to the event, so. Anybody else to keep in mind, put that in your calendar and swing on by? Well, I had said to him, there's two, and he said he would really like to see to come to the 3 o'clock, the 3 to 5, because he's ordering food and celebrating and everything there, so. Yeah, there was a calendar conflict in the day, we're doing a tour, I think it's the 25th? Yeah, that's the 26th. Yeah, and then there was a, I think he was having a bit of a celebration at 3. Yeah, so if anybody's kicking around the neighborhood, stop by and have a little bite to eat and, well, I said congratulations on behalf of all of us and we wish the best, wish to the gentleman as well. The Baby Go, does anybody know anything about that or are they going to the Baby Go Charity that's happening on Friday? Yeah, I don't either. Pardon me? It's a go, it seemed like it in the emails, so we seem to get reoccurring, or I seem to get a lot of emails and I have, I think, I will forward it on the last one to you because I was unsure, right? I know that sometimes, like I said, we get a lot of spam, but this is a local, local group, I think, that's booked the Mackenzie Conference Center, I just don't know a lot about them, right? So it doesn't sound like any of us do, so I guess maybe check out their page or check them out on Facebook and if you're around to attend that as well. I don't know, Bill, go ahead.
Just also, what is happening with the chamber and us and that?
That's the Alberta, we'll call it in, Amila both are representatives, that's not the local chamber that does that, that's the Alberta Chamber that does that, but I think.
Are we, are we getting involved in it or are we buying an ad or what are we doing?
Well, I think Jen had answered the email and our local chamber is possibly working with them, is that what it was? Yes. And do we typically, yeah, if you could come down and maybe just answer, like, is this something that we typically advertise in? Have we utilized them or been part of this in the past?
Yeah, so they had, in my email that I sent to you guys, they had reached out to us and we had said like, we need to hold on this right now because we have other initiatives that are going on and we're kind of cart before the horse on this. And then we have come to learn that they had also reached out to the chamber who have taken this on, which is great, so like I said, we'll endeavor to kind of help them out where we can. I believe that they've put out something similar in our region before. I do see value in us advertising in it. I think Marie Lynn and I are just a little bit concerned about the content portion of this because they had said that they would be relying on us for some of it and right now what we have is outdated and we're looking to update it. So I have reached out to the, to the publisher to, to get in touch with her to see more about what specifically that they're looking at and just to kind of express my concerns with some of it.
Yeah, and if we could find out what the deadline is.
I think it's pretty quick because I have heard from Marie Lynn that they're looking at September and I think a September-like publication. Actually, Ken had, do you remember when you and Marie met with, do you remember what their deadline was? No, they, I think, was it a full page was a couple thousand bucks? Am I right there? Just to kind of put that in context, what we spend on a full-page advertising in the Free Press is much, much less than that. Yeah, it would be from the chamber, yeah.
Well, no, the letter I received wasn't.
Oh, the one that I got was.
Or the email, I didn't recognize. It was TCG Publishing or, that's who's doing, oh, that's the only letter that I got.
Okay, there seems to be a couple. I think the publication itself has been doing like mass emails out, so I think like everybody on council, all the staff, so then they've all, I've gotten quite a few emails about it. And then just recently, a letter specifically from the chamber has come out about it.
Okay.
And I think there was like a QR code on it and I think that was like a link to the advertising opportunities and stuff in it as well.
Gotcha. So you do kind of see the potential? Gotcha, so you do kind of see the potential in kind of putting something?
I see the value in us advertising in it and things like that, I am, it's kinda hard, cause I, I wish we would have been able to hold on it myself, but, um, I, I wanna support the chamber in, in what they're doing, um, I just, uh, I wanna make sure that the information that they, they are putting in it is gonna be as up-to-date as it can be, I suppose. I would just hate if we, if they were looking at what's on our website or pulling old information that, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to update yet.
If we're going to do something like that, shouldn't we sort of pick a priority item to put out there, like, okay, let's talk about zero fee or, you know, prioritize something? Because I mean, just putting the town of Drayton Valley, just...
We could do a number of things, like we could highlight our education model or zero fee, we could be highlighting recreation, um, like... Yeah, and it's not to say that we just put one in, one and done, we can put one and try to highlight a whole bunch of things, we can have each department put something in to highlight a different aspect, cause we do have a lot. What's that? It is.
Wow, okay, well, perhaps we'll have a discussion at our next planning meeting and see if there is an advantage of putting a, an ad in, it doesn't have to be a full page necessarily, it can be a quarter or a half page or whatever. And then you spoke about our website being updated, so why is it not updated and what would need to be?
Uh, so the information, like specifically with the economic development stuff, which, um, it kinda looked like that's more the information that they would be looking to gather, um, it's stuff on there from like our, the last plan that we had put together from actually when Eric Burton did it, 1/2016.
Didn't a previous employee, they'll work on the website and bring everything up to speed and get all that done and...
Um, there have been updates to the website, but that content is still...
The content, okay.
Um, still the old stuff, so it, it has a new look, but the information is still similar and, and this is why our strategic planning sessions that are coming up in the next couple of weeks are, are pretty critical.
Okay, so we'll just bring this to, uh, the next planning meeting and then see what the next steps are there.
For sure.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Um, are there any other upcoming meetings and/or conferences? It's a little bit quieter now with, um, what's happening with, uh, committee, I guess that's next, committee updates, maybe we'll jump to that, 11.3, committee updates, some have wrapped it up for the summer, but there's still some that are active, anything that anyone needs to bring to council's attention that's happening?
Uh, yeah, July 28th, we have the Education Committee to review the Strategic Workshop Report, so, um, maybe about an hour and a half, we'll sit around and do that. I think that's all I have kind of in the immediate future, other than the Economic Development Strategic Planning stuff, uh, start of August there, August 8th, 8th, 9th and 10th.
Okay, perfect, um, what happened this week, various thoughts and ideas? Everybody looks like they're half asleep right now and they're just... This is when I wanna bring something really pressing to the table and be like, "Oh, in favor," and everybody's just, "Whoa," tired, not knowing what they're putting their hand up for. Okay, sounds wonderful, uh, we will jump into our information items, 12.1, information items for July 20th, 2022, are the Drayton Valley RCMP stats, June 2022, our action tracking sheet, a letter from Aterri and Donna McQuaid, a letter from the Alberta Agriculture, Forestry and Rural Economic Development. And, um, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept these information items? Counselor Evans, thank you, look at you, just on that. And the motion is, uh, is right up there, if we can just scroll up a little bit? Yes, I would love for you to make the motion. No, you have to actually say it.
Okay, the council accept the information items for information.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Favor. That is carried and we will adjourn the meeting at 2:55 PM. Thank you very much, everybody, and I would ask if council could stick around for a few minutes?